I will call to order the committee of the whole meeting at 5:30 PM. So first up, they go to the order. If you have some members having anything, you can all use your computer or work. All right. Review of regular meeting agenda, just a few. Usually is enough to look at our set agenda. If there is anything that you were thinking might need to get pulled, if you had big questions about, that would be very time to value. Now, so with that, we'll just move on to our first discussion item, workshop on building code with our building and fiscal Brian Keller.
Evening, everyone. Yes, Brian Kaler, a billing official for the city. Let me go ahead and share my screen. John, could you please allow that? Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay, and everyone can see this. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, all right, for tonight. What I'm bringing forward, I just wanted to go over a couple of titles here. Title 10 is the building administration codes, so we're going to do an overview of that. And then. Your title 10, section 10.01, which is the building codes. And then we're going to go over some of the changes to the tables that you will see. And then title 10, section 10.04, which is the fire code. And then some updates on the fire code of the IFC. Kind of give an update and then overview of the international wildland urban interface code. The WUI. And then an update and then an update and some more information regarding the Washington State Energy Code and where we're at. I'll end with some questions. So last we had an update and for the was the last building code update was in 2021. That was under the 2018 code. And what we did is we we really worked on formatting to align with the rest of the DMC codes. And also updated the administration section of of title 10. That was our main focus in 2018. And 2023, early spring, we briefed the can the council on building code updates. Was hoping to move forward with that. But the building code council deferred the option for implementation, which was supposed to be was supposed to be July 1st in 2023. They pushed the implementation date, not the adoption, but the implementation date out twice to consecutive 180 days. And it now in late 2023, we were notified by the building code council that it looks like the effective date for the codes will be March 15th of this year. So we do have a set date and it does look like they will be moving forward with that. Also, earlier this year. Last month, actually, the legislature and the building code council are actually considering additional changes that could impact a couple of the codes. And so we'll stay tuned. I'll probably provide an update on that. Here, hear more about it coming up. So the first area that I want to talk about. For the title 10.01, building code and construction overview. So what we provided was kind of the straight, the strike and delete version. Apologize, it's it's wasn't completely clean, so I can also work on cleaning that up for you. And then we have provided also a clean copy, but we did work on some more formatting that was that I missed on the 2018 codes. So you will see that. And then amendments to section 105 under permits. What we did is we went through. And ran it against our other codes within other departments. And so in the IBC and IRC, a couple of the building permit requirements had to change. And it was regards to fences, building code states seven foot. Anything above seven feet requires a permit, but other sections of our code state six. So we had to be in compliance with the rest of the municipal code. So that was the main one for there. Another one that you'll see in under the IBC changes is addressing the I included a number sizing table. This is in regards to, I mean, Duval's growing and also the buildings are growing as well. So this is for first responders to be able to see the address. And location for it. So this this table was needed. We did not have that. So I included that in the code. Tables are updated. I have another slide to give you an example, but cleaned up the table, tables for design review. Building design review. And then also they they also changed a couple of our design criteria for that, and it's in the tables. Also added. The swimming pool code. The state did not adopt that, so they allowed that up to the jurisdiction to adopt. So I haven't included that into our adoption as we do have swimming pools that are permitted. So we need that code in in there. And as long as and also with property maintenance, as we get ready to update our code enforcement. It's important to have this code as a reference as well. And also the WUI code, which I mentioned, which is the wildland urban interface code. And I do have more slides following to give you an update and then what it looks like. So here are the tables currently on the left. That is what it looks like in our DMC codes. And then this is to your right is what I'm proposing. You'll see a couple of changes within the table. Wind speed that has increased under this code cycle. And then also our frost line depth actually was updated. It was incorrect a couple of code cycles ago. So it's it actually is 18 inches. So that's that's kind of what you'll see in those tables. The next slide, title 10.04 is actually the fire code. So we had that broken apart 10.01. And then 10.04. And we actually have the the international fire code within 10.01, as you can see, which is point 120. And so what we did is we merged the language and then amended it into the international fire code. So we're actually removing 10.04. Moving it into title 10.01 where it should be. So you'll see that that was one of the changes. Also, the need for this update, Duval is obviously growing. The buildings are getting a lot more bigger and more complex. So as a building gets more complex, so do the codes. The update also would align with other valley cities, as this would be a regional update. Eastside Fire is our fire marshal, is our service, third party service. And so they service many of the valleys and this would align to what the responders would be used to and needed for level protection. Also to note, the fire code hasn't been updated. Last update was in 2013. So it is it is in need. And there is quite a bit of changes within it, and it has to do with communication. How the first responders, like the antennas, communication, everything relayed to the first responders. So a lot of the language is in there. I want to touch base for you on the code update for the interface while in the WUI. This is a big change for code cycle. Adds fire protection standards based on your proximity to wildlands and other areas with vegetated fuels that can contribute to wildfires. City of Duval is partnering with local jurisdictions in our region to bring awareness to our building community. And hopefully provide clarity on some prescriptive options to make this transition easier to understand. We do have flyers posted on our website regarding a, you know, this code is coming down the pipeline. This is what you can pair for. This is what it's going to look like and also what might, you know, what we're probably going to be requiring as of right now. The DNR map to your bottom right, that's by the Department of Natural Resources. And this just shows the outline of densities and fire requirements. Those are the big picture of the of the state. And then my other slides will also kind of gear in into Duval and show you kind of where we're at. But there are five interfaces. I'm going to go through those. Interface code. So the current DNR map includes the interfaces. And here are the five interfaces. There are the urban areas, wildland urban interface. Wildland urban intermix and Duval is is in the interface and intermix. And then we also have the wildlands, long term, non-buildable areas. So the DNR mapping is updated every three years as of right now. Local municipalities are leaned on and are required to provide information that updates the map of through a findings of facts. So this would be if a new development comes in, we would need to submit the kind of the density and what category they would fall under based off of the finding of facts. This would go to the DNR mapping Department of Natural Resources to update. The first one, high density would be the urban areas. It's pretty self-explanatory. There was areas in Washington with both dense human development as well as less than 50% vegetated wildland coverage. This is Seattle, higher density, redmond. With the large structures and then the red, which would be Duval interface, as you can see on the map. It's found along the outskirts of urban areas. The wildland urban interface is defined as those areas where human development meets areas that are covered with more than 50% wildlands. And to be considered in interface, development structures must be bordered by wildlands on at least one side. Next would be the wildland intermix. And it looks like we have a little bit of that in the city. And those are the areas where structures intermingle with wildlands to be to be considered intermax. Development or structure must be surrounded by two or more sides by wildlands. Intermix is often found between the interface and the wildlands. Intermix can also be found in undeveloped low density pockets of urban areas. And then we have the wildlands, which would be in the green. Those are areas without structures or human development. That also have more than 50% burnable vegetated cover. Most wildlands could eventually become intermix interface or even urban areas as they develop. Example, a new single family home in the woods could make wildland into intermix. While a new house, housing development strip mall or other series of structures could turn section of wildlands into interface. This is the prescriptive route of what would be required. As the requirement of Duval. Prescriptive, what would be required in a building, class A roofing. Instead of comp valleys, we would require metal roof valleys, which we would need details on. Exterior walls and projections made of exist 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 resistant materials. That can be party board or like a one hour rated wall, rated decks or concrete patios. Double pane or tempered windows. We already pretty much have those based off of our energy code requirements. Specific attic ventilation opening requirements, and this would even be for crawl space venting, non-combustible materials is what will be required. The next one, so that was the update for the WUI. And I'll I'll touch on a bill at the very end. That might be an amendment to what the WUI is saying right now. But an update on the energy code, history of the energy code. Energy code was adopted in 1977 by statute. So we are required to enforce it. It was a voluntary requirement at that time, state code, Building Code Act and State Energy Code Act, SEC. Well, we're passed by legislation in 1985. State Building Code Act gave rulemakers authority to the SBC, which is the State Building Code Council, which oversees all building and energy codes within the state. We're going to fast forward. 2013 is when everything kind of ramped up. Inslee brought together by partisan group of lawmakers, develop a plan for the state to meet its greenhouse gas emissions target. It was Senate Bill 5802. And then I provided the RCW of what they what the bill is, the goal of the bill is to get to by 2031. Some of the significant changes that we're seeing, the R value has been increased in homes, which is our value is the rating of bad insulation and wall cavities. Wall cavities or also rough. So ceiling, ceiling has increased from 49 to R660. Wood frame walls increase from a 21, R21, R13 to 20 plus five, which means five would be on the exterior of a building. So we're going to have to. It's a little bit more complex on when they frame a building, insulation on the outside, which is rigid, plus a 20. And same thing with the slab depth. That was originally from two feet, which is insulation R10. Now it goes down to four feet. We will have to reinforce that. Other significant changes, I mentioned the wall. I wanted to give you a kind of a diagram of what what they're actually looking like now. Really, you can fill an entire cavity with rigid or bad insulation low end. But to achieve it, it's just showing that with an R60 type building, the buildings are getting a lot tighter. Air wise. And then the the plus five refers to the continuous rigid insulation on the outside, which I touched on, which is new and it's it's quite difficult to achieve. Or that requirement. So we've been working with architects locally, helping them. Because we need to also be able to inspect that out in the field properly. Chapter four of the table, I just wanted to put on the left side, you'll see. This is our drawn out table of requirements. So a building, when it is submitted, it will fall under these five categories in a permit submittal. And from there, then we go with the required credit credits. It shows on the left that actually decreased. But per the table. Your allotted credits have actually decreased. So say gas furnace was one credit in the 18 code. Well, now it's point five. So that's that's where they're showing that you need five credits instead of the six. It's been reduced by one on the right. Additions under 150 square feet don't require NG credits. That's new. Addition is 150 to 500 square feet or require the two credits. So we're previously, they did not. I wanted to show you what was passed. So the table on the left was passed for the 2021 code adoption. There was an amendment. Which was part of the push of the code implementation for the 2021. On the right, gas furnace is back in. On the table, as of right now, it shows in the left, it's under number one, it says negative three, but it will be updated to point five. So it is back in the table. Just wanted to at least update everyone on that. Also, electric heat pumps with supplemental heating from a furnace is now zero. So they're really going away from the electric AC. And then for summary, building codes are evolving and for good reason. It is important that we adopt the latest addition to stay current with state requirements. And to stay in line with other cities in our areas to better protect our city and the people that live here. 2021 building codes will become effective March 15th. Barring any additional delays, but I, as of right now, I don't see any. I did want to bring up one thing about the Senate Bill 6120. This is one that we're watching. It's an amendment to the WUI. And it's up for review and approval by the Senate. And so I should have an update hopefully in the coming weeks. That's all I have for the presentation. Any questions?
I think you may have already answered this question at a prior meeting, but I have forgotten the answer. For permits that are submitted. What? So if this changes on March 15th, I think you said, or is it any building permit issued on or after that date that would then be subject to it? What about in process?
Yeah, it would be after the implementation date. Is when it goes into effect.
So anyone who submits. So if they haven't picked their, it still doesn't apply.
Yeah, it it goes to the limiting. Yeah, your application is good for a year based off of our municipal code.
Other questions? I don't see any yet. So I had one. So in this, when I was reading through the red lines, I saw, you know, fireworks were mentioned. And so for members of the public, I did see one line that said, except it's permitted for consumer fireworks under developed city code. And so I just wanted to confirm that doesn't change anything. We currently allow, but that's just standard language that was being added as the part of the updated fire code part.
It should be. And I can get confirmation with the fire marshal on that. And I'll try and have him at the next meeting as well for any other questions regarding that. But yes. Yeah.
Other questions? Councilmember Seppel.
Yeah, for replacements of existing items like a gas furnace. Or electric furnace. So what's the impact if they need to say an existing structure of a gas furnace, you need to replace it?
Yeah, so great question. As of right now, it that is not a requirement to meet the energy code. They are looking at updating that part of code, though. So as of right now, no, you're not required to. If you're replacing just a furnace. It can be similar to like a like and like. Right now, under this code, there's no amendment to that yet.
Other questions? Oh, did you have something, Director?
Yeah. So Brian, would that go for any appliance in a existing structure? Furnace, powder paint, dishwasher, stove, all that.
Correct. Yeah, but they are looking at changing that later.
Go ahead, Joe. Brian, one other part of my question, we talked about what's inside of the house. But if, say, for example, you're placing a roof, do you need to meet the new code for exterior improvement?
Correct. Under and that would fall under the WUI code. Yes. So it would be type A roofing, metal flashing. That is a state requirement. And we couldn't amend that part.
Yeah, this is sort of a question of the fire code, which I knew is the core thing. We're talking about the sort of the subset of that, but you think about the number eight standards that are changing. We're one of, based on the different streets, the letters, it talks about new and existing buildings and then sort of numbers being provided. One sort of the source of those, but then the other is, is there then an enforcement around that? A resident doesn't put up the numbers or chooses not to. It really didn't talk about execution as much as you know, high level process, then I realize that this is international. Code has been an implementation piece, may still be TDD, but I was just curious from an enforcement perspective, since it said new and existing. How that figured into existing structures in Duval.
Could you reference what section of the code?
Yeah, it was IBC, section 5021 and hereby amended as followed. New and existing buildings shall be provided with approved address, numbers and letters. And then it goes into the table listing. It was just the existing one that I would succeed in clarity.
Okay. No, that's a great question for existing as well. So that would be if you come in with a remodel permit or whatnot, then they would need to be updated to that. So it's not just every building that's out there. Once that, once this goes into effect. It's just when you submit a permit, that requirement would fall under that.
Okay, I assume that was the case, but I wanted to sort of buy it because it did specifically call out a remodel or or subject to. So thank you.
Great. Yep.
Can we check on these two really quick? Any questions apart? Okay, Councilmember Nelson? Yeah, I it maybe was on the table and I didn't read enough. But if you are doing an interior remodel. Maybe changing out some windows, but not adding any spare footage whatsoever. Is there, I know that with some buildings, you know, if the cost of it exceeds a certain percent, you have to upgrade everything. Is there anything similar to that to the residential home where they made remodels significantly enough that now they have been all of those?
Not under the building code for much, but our DMC, it's typically like 50% of a remodel threshold in like a windows, you you don't need, it's based on a building permit. So for windows, you wouldn't need a permit. So typically would be anything interiorly, structurally, mechanical, anything that falls under the guidelines or requirements under the IRC IBC, the base codes. So if you're just replacing flooring, tiling, none of that would actually be required to have a permit.
So what if you ripped out your entire kitchen and roof wall, things like that? Would then you be subject to the new energy requirements and all of this new code?
Correct. So the area that you were touching or working on would be required to be brought up to code. And that's just what in the language of the code is what is requiring. It wouldn't require you to go into another room and upgrade that entire room. It's just whatever work is being done. You don't touch anything that stays under the existing code that was built.
Okay. Other questions? I have one more. If nobody else. Okay. I was just curious. So I mean, with a few things changing in terms of educating people that are maybe going to be surprised of, oh, wow, now I have to do this or something like that. Is that kind of, is there anything proactive we're anticipating we're going to do to educate everyone that this is coming up? Or is it going to be more on as people apply for permits and they'll find out that way?
No, I I hope not. No, we're we're going to try and be on top of it. So I I work with a group, actually in the valley, a lot of the building official group. And so we're really trying to be on the same page of what we're going to require. So we don't get the the whole thing of, well, city of Lake Stevens does it differently or whatnot. So we're trying to really be on the same page and present and require the same requirements. With that said, we are putting together flyers that we would be handing out. And also, we do have already on our website, the code stuff, code changes that are coming out. And some other, the other outreach that we're going to try and do, but kind of a united front on that. So everyone's not caught off guard. We are going to reach out to our developers and provide like a educational thing like, hey, this is, this is coming down the pipeline. Be prepared. This is what is going to be required.
Thank you. Any last comments or questions? All right. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
And next up, we have our proposed policy on field and facilities rental with our city administrator.
Hello. Good evening. I have one brief slide that we'll bring up. So in the council packet is a first touch document that only really deals with changes of our new field rental policy. We are not proposing at this time to replace the facilities policies that we have on moving this space, renting new EPO. Those are pretty well established. They're working. We did make a few modifications to renting this space, which is that folks who rent this space have to put it back together like this. After we remodeled, talking about even being attentive to our technology. So we've done some work on facilities rentals. But this is just to, the first touches on field rental, we've got a field rental policy. So the slide is why now? So what we are looking to do is when comes online, Civic Plus has a plugin for online field and facility rentals. But in order to use that online system, we need to have some policy parameters to program on renting fields. And so that's why we're bringing this now. It's not to say that things are broken with renting big law. The Public Works Department does an excellent job of kind of navigating all the requests, putting people on field. But now that we're moving to a system where people will be using an online platform. We need to have a policy to back that up. Again, the new policy is only on field rentals. We're not going to change concession policy that council did quite a bit of work on last year. We'll put that as an appendix. And then we'll keep the facilities rentals. And then in your packet, you'll see we pulled quite a few neighboring jurisdictions to inform how we would write this field policy. So we looked at Toomamish, Monroe, Snowpalmie. Baffle to kind of cobble together what we thought would be the best parts of those to create ours. I will tell you, kind of in the continuum, we would not choose. Baffles is very extensive, but we didn't go lean like Snowpalmie. So we landed somewhere in between. We also called Smash Person Rep to find out what was working with theirs. They have a whole policy that was updated. And so we just And so we just talked to them, what works with their policy, what doesn't work. And so that's where we landed with the proposed policy here. And so tonight is just kind of an introduction to what we did. And to answer any initial questions with the hope that we can gather feedback and then perfect it over the next, so.
All right, questions, comments?
Thank you. And this is just more, because I knew this in the last page, it actually still has a reference to the city of Monroe. Was that ended up being sort of the footprint for the majority? I know you said you looked at a number of them, you didn't go one way or the other. I was curious if Monroe ended up being. Kind of in the middle when I was sort of reviewing the draft. So I think that was some good kind of paste in there, maybe can't remove, but. I was just curious sort of how much of that is was sort of the core, I guess, where you ended up starting work, because you obviously had a skeleton that you then amended.
Um, the skeleton actually is Boffels.
Okay.
Um, with some of Monroe's put in, some Temamish, a little less on Snowpawnee. So Snowpawnee was more of a template for kind of how you could go. But the core of it is. And then I just used Boffels and kind of took quite a bit of Temamish, some of Monroe's. But the template itself is Boffels.
Other question? Oh, Director, did you have something?
Just to add some of the things previously that are in here, that we're not set in stone on the word, I think should stagger like time. Here's a block. We're building in fifteen minutes. Either way, we want like field one, two, and three to be off that, so that, you know. We can do our best to mitigate parking, the second certainly still come along, and we haven't expanded it yet. So those are things, we're not set on time, we're just looking at the thought, the process, and, you know. How it looks to folks. But we have to start somewhere, that's kind of where it is, so we're not set on anything. We have to fit and review like with you guys, so this is great to remove from the end and then just kind of get into it and read and participate in that all, so.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I actually have several questions, but I'll just. So there was one section that talked about when you are reviewing requests that might be at the same time, it would be, you would kind of create a hierarchy of certain activities. Would be the higher priority. And one of them was if they would have more than one team on the field. And for example, I think that's great for soccer, you can have multiple teams on a field safely. Baseball, you cannot have multiple teams on a field safely, especially our field. At Big Rock, that's where the older kids typically play, the younger kids, they're at the elementary school. So the older kids are playing at Big Rock and it's really not safe. To have hard balls with bats, you know what I mean? And so I'm just kind of trying to understand how that might work out. When it's not feasible to have two teams, and you'd always be ranked lower because of soccer or football, they could have lots of teams practicing all at one time safely. So that's kind of my question about how you would address that, especially during the primary baseball.
I don't have an answer to that, obviously I don't know. So, I think, you know, this was a first start kind of taking from some methodology for ranking. So you have to have some methodology if we're going to not have a human spend their time kind of analyzing each. Well, a human will analyze each reservation, but to build kind of a policy framework. We're trying to find a methodology that makes sense. It may benefit one sport or another, so if that's an area of concern, we should tweak it. So I don't have an answer to what would I do, because that's a hypothetical that I didn't anticipate in just drafting a draft.
Other questions?
Say you could certainly do something with agents there. I know they're going to only keep all, you can certainly put three to whatever discipline we feel they're on, so maybe that takes out the pie, if it's over a certain age and under, maybe they want to do this at point one, so that's something to think about.
Other questions?
And we are kind of capping, like that's part of that.
Oh, do you want to mine, and then I think I saw yours, you're going again. One of mine was about, it was so interesting. So if there is a situation with admission, where somebody's rented it out and they're gonna charge admission, there's a structure that I saw in one of the other felly bottles or some, and probably quite a few of them actually, where they charge. You would charge, you would get back like ten percent or some percentage. But the interesting thing to me about that was that if if someone from the public wanted, did not want to pay that, that they didn't have to, to enter. So I was curious, so is there a requirement or some kind of levy used to tell them that they need to make it known that people do not have to pay an entry fee? I mean, because that was the missing piece for me, where what if, I mean, it's not like we'll have a staff member there saying, oh, by the way, you know, you can come in, this is a public park, right? So is that an extra something that you would put in some kind of rental agreement, basically? I don't know.
Possibly. So there, there was kind of two approaches. One was to try to collect as much as you could from these rentals, from, from the fees that are paid. And then there was the other, which was, this is a public park, this is a public place, you shouldn't have entry fees, period. But you should be able to collect some amount from particularly tournaments. And I should note that we don't currently have a fee for, so that's something we would need to adopt as we work through with. And so, yeah, I mean, we would potentially, when we're creating a form or creating the payments, sure to say, if you charge like a tournament fee or something, members of the public can walk in and watch these games. You can't charge an entry fee for entering. I, I had children that played youth sports and there were tournaments that charged an entry fee even to walk into the tournament. And we're trying, we, so I saw policies with that approach. We didn't feel it was appropriate for Big Rock, which is also kind of a public park, that may eventually have more walking paths and other uses to, to take that approach with that mark, but, you know, open for conversation.
I'm really quick, I know you had yours, but he hasn't spoken yet, so councilmember paper, go ahead.
Just to, I get to point of clarification, so let me rephrase, rephrase what you said, that you just make sure I do understand. So there may be an entry fee for the people, right, and that may make sense. But there should never be a, an admission fee for a spectator. That's correct.
That's the approach we took in this policy.
Yeah.
Is that instead of allowing and collecting fees from that, or sports leagues to charge an entry fee even to be at the park. Then, I mean, presumably you would collect more of those fees, right? But we thought that not allowing entry fees, period, but still collecting a lesser, whatever was always those rental fees were, would be more appropriate, more appropriate balance. But again, this is, that's kind of the approach that my and Steve and I talked.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Sepul, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I just kind of follow along with what you said about not requiring admission fees.
I mean, particularly when you think about Big Rock and its evolution in the coming years. There are going to be people potentially that are, that have zero interest in watching kids play sports. But wanting to use it for other purposes.
Yeah. Uh, councilmember Mercer, go ahead.
Yeah, so there's two points that might have just been, or I was really concerned, if they were considered, you have all the policies in terms of prioritization. Reconciling, you know, if you have equal priorities and criteria, sides, ever reduce school district percentage of residents. I'm curious if, if, because I didn't even hear if I missed it. Apologies, but around sort of the monopoly use, like one of the complaints we hear from the community, a lot of certain groups monopolize the field, or and it's based on, sort of reference to the team size, but not like you can reserve X days before you're allowed to reserve another one, or capping the number of practice sessions for a given organization, because I think some groups want to have deeper pockets and can afford to book more stuff. There's going to be smaller groups, but if, if that was at all considered or taken into account, then the other was around inflation policy. There were seventy two hours, but is there, was there any thought around like a waitlist, if there was a plot you wanted? Again, that's a overhead on staff, but I don't want to necessarily suggest that, but since you're doing this via software, you know, if, if there was a block that wasn't available, but somebody canceled, that there sort of for the right of purchase, that's a, so that's a, the two points.
Yeah, so on capping practice, so if you look at Boffels, Boffel has this system where after you prove residency for all of these applicants, you kind of sit down with a staff member and there's the equivalent kind of a draft. Where it's like, well, okay, it's worked through all the queries, you're gonna get this. And so it's this pretty complex process for figuring out how to equitably handle multiple reservations. And so I tried to find an approach that was a little less in Boffels, thinking we could test this, but if we needed to get to the equivalent of this draft system of caps and those kinds of things, we could. So I didn't put it in here. And that doesn't mean that potentially you wouldn't get there depending on all the applications we get and the usages that were seen. On cancellation, I started with actually a much more stringent cancellation process in my draft. When I talked to Director Lenishchewski, we went with our current cancellation fee, which is seventy two hours. So again, we tried to find more of a softer approach right now than what some of the other policies require, which is a far more stringent cancellation policy. Where you kind of take most of the deposit and kind of assist them for not returning the money back if it's like So that was kind of the approach we took on cancellations, is to keep our current as the starting point in this knowing that we could become more stringent if we needed, and there was a reason to keep them more stringent. And then waitlist.
Well, there may not be need to do it, I agree with the approach of less than more until you need it, you know, start small and scale. I just was curious, you know, sometimes if it was an automated system, that can be, you know, handled at the same time, but that's a key value that may or may not exist.
One thing we did, which is not exactly a waitlist, is we did put language in, it wasn't found in other policies to say we really mean it, like if you don't need this and you've just reserved it to kind of hold it, but you don't need it. We consider it not necessarily a violation of a policy, but almost a violation of a policy, to basically hold for none. And then we expect you to cancel.
Yeah, so the cancellation policy at the last will speak to reservations not being fulfilled, not identifying and caring whether for canceling. Because some groups are more than happy to pay sixty, ninety bucks an hour to hold field. You don't want that, you don't feel it's used. There are other groups out there that will use it. We do have a non-formal policy now, like hey, if somebody's not gonna use it Friday, the sooner you can tell us, the better. And then we'll likely find somebody to take it, but we do like a best we have a couple days now. But I would imagine if there's an automated system, John can participate in it for the facility side of the operation, like if there's a check box, like yeah, I need to do more fields, check a box, if they come open or can't wait, then maybe that auto propagates some response. And share, they get noticed even.
Additional questions?
Councilmember Nelson? Yeah, I know, I didn't respect you at all, but I just, I don't know if I need to do a formal point of order, but I think I've heard three questions and I feel like if I asked a question that potentially those questions, I would have been, you know, interrupted potentially and not answered. I just wanted to, I think that's an important thing to point out.
Definitely, yeah, I, I missed that. So just call point of order, you can interrupt a council member, call point of order, it lets the chair know if they've missed something. A point of order does need to be seconded, so another council member who noticed that would be like second, I'd say, please state your point, and then you can tell me that, and then we'll say, oh yeah, well, point well taken, and then we'll just go on a question.
Thank you. So I did have another question. So there is something that shows that the school district has the, I think the second highest priority, and I'm pleased to be activating. And one thing I noticed in some of the other policies is they actually have an use agreement with the school districts that would give them that highest priority. My only concern is our leagues and the people who live in our community, we don't have a lot of assets to school district. And so the school district now is leading over and having a higher priority on the fields that you and I have payers to pay for for our community. That can create a little bit of conflict. So I feel a little bit nervous about having this whole district always have a higher priority than potentially leagues or other nonprofits that are really providing a major service to the community, that that would not be in the best interest, or maybe something we just have to think a little bit further on, like maybe if they want to have higher priority, then they really need to make sure that their fields are very acceptable, especially in the summer when it might be harder to get through to them or schedule or. Anyway, that's something I would like to look at.
Okay, well, whichever one of you wants to go first, I'll leave it to you.
So I agree, I mean, particularly when you look at Temamish. So Temamish prioritizes the school districts and almost every policy does. So one thing I would say is, as I was drafting it, Director Lenishchewski and I did talk about whether the school district should be such a high priority. I think up to council, absolutely. I included it because it would have been an obvious departure from all the other policies to not have the school district as one of the higher priorities, but that doesn't mean that Duval is a. And when you think about Temamish particularly, and my children played on the Temamish field, so I have more familiarity with it. There is a strong partnership between the school districts and those big ball fields in Temamish. And so there is a lot of interchange between the Temamish city and the school district with those parks. So it makes sense in Temamish, it might not make sense here, but I included it because it would be a very obvious departure from all of those things.
And then Director Lenishchewski?
Yeah, and there are some ILAs, because they do run the kids in the most of the fields that are in the city.
Exactly.
Or the school. One thing to consider, this only happened kind of once, so an emergency, and maybe it's a time constraint, like anything under four P M, because the high school kids can only get there before four P M anyway, and they get out at two thirty. We had that last year with baseball softball and whatnot. We haven't ever had a day of the region outside of that one specific time. But, yeah, we're not.
I, I saw councilmember, or the, okay, councilmember Sepul.
Yeah, even though the school district boundaries exceed the city of Duval's boundaries, the majority of those people from the school district are residents of Duval, and we tend to prioritize those when we schedule the fields to begin with. So I, I don't really see any issue with giving the school district priority, because in turn we're giving residents of Duval priority.
Some point of clarification on that, you, are you reading that to be like level one priority of, hey, a hundred percent of our kids are in the school district or a team from the school, like the high school? Because most of those kids are from the city, they're obviously from the district, just to.
Well, yeah, the district gets larger than the city. I know, I know that, but the majority of students live within the city. No?
That's like sixty six, thirty three.
Sixty six percent?
Yes, relatively speaking, we're sixty six percent of the district population. But only thirty percent of the area, much more, because we're a city focused, right, with the then population, so. I'm skeptical of that. If we can see about that, or total, and we're aging. But I, I wonder if there's a subset too, because maybe down below it's forty percent Duval residents, you could give another tie record to a percentage of kids on team, exclusively a school team. Other, I know the district does it that way. Under their part addition, or their, their part addition, three thousand dollars, like you have so many, you're getting the district to keep them in, someone else. But, I, I can't wait.
Councilmember Sepul? I just had a question about resiliency with the school district in terms of facility, well, we still, we're talking earlier, it would be really nice if the schools in the district would let, how would we be needed? So when we're talking earlier, it would be really nice if the school district was less covered, we needed a multi-core carpets room. Especially in the winter, there's no place for people to go and have fresh shoes, and that was made as a gem for carpet. And I'm really so proud.
Um Director Thomas, and then.
Uh so we're gonna be asking some of these questions that our technical advisory committee on February twenty-sixth. I think, you know, a lot of communities look their assets more, I think, with, you know, school districts, though it is one of the items that's on our list that will be.
Um and then I have another question, if you guys are good so far, um uh let's see, for. Okay, well, you already covered the thing about the um over-reserving and not using it. Um so I think that that's probably sufficient to just have the slurp that's already in there under cancellation, I know some of the other policies had um. Had it in a different section, not cancellation, just kind of talking about scheduling, but I think that's surprising. But I guess my other question was um something that's come up before in this in this policy is about storage. Um my question is, does does the city own all the current storage containers or storage things on that property? They don't, correct?
Right.
Okay, so. Um technically, this is a second question, but that was my first, is that, does anyone else have any other, okay? Uh my question was, oh.
Uh you can go ahead, but I do have another question.
My my question about it was, um in the past, we've had your fee appear on these storage containers and I, and. Doesn't get taken very quickly if it's not a city, but I wasn't sure that this is an appropriate place to put it, or if that could go into those. I don't know if there's a specific agreement for storage with the organizations that have containers, so that when your fee appears, it gets taken care of really quickly.
So this is a historical leftover, there are containers that are not ours, there's a charge for those. I'm trying to clean that up and this as well, routinely when we do receive your fee, we try to advise them and my fear was for sure that they handled it. Quickly, because it kind of went a little faster on town, so yeah, those those are great points, it could certainly be something that's noted on the storage, you know. That can hear, we're beginning, other things need to be managed in a quick and efficient manner. Um I expect if we're gonna try to do this, go through a rebuild, we might reorganize and allocate specific spaces, kind of like. Parking lot number one through six, or whatever they are, and dictate size a little more appropriately, cause. You could argue like, oh, I can get a point footer, you only have a ten, you know, so we could probably park that out to be a little more consistent. And maybe it's in the fence corral, maybe it's not. Repeat is bad, we have the entire north side of the new jet inside the fence line for feed, like three weeks ago, the guys that they clean off. Like the entire. It was quite a.
So I added a section to potentially edit on repeat and storage, so. I'll make some of that some.
Additional questions? Um, Renata?
I have one more follow-up. On the cancellation policy, one issue, when the school district had a group of people frustrated about availability. It became pretty apparent that certain groups would just reserve as much as they thought they might use. Hang on to it, and then when they realized they don't need it, let it go, they didn't have to pay for it. And then other teams who then really could have used that time, it's too late to then schedule, because. You know, so the seventy-two hour, um well, it seems reasonable, I'm just trying to figure something. One policy that had a statement that said, if you're abusing this, it looks like you're reserving way more than you need, and then you release it in seventy-two hours. So you don't have to pay for it, and you realize you don't need it, that's going to be frowned upon when you try to reserve next year. Do you know what I mean? Like, at least have something in there that reminds people not to abuse that, because you're really holding a field from someone else who might need to use it. And then it'll sit empty and we don't make money and yeah.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, we have these blocks that are geared towards um sports seasons. And you should take that, uh the the teams that are booking should take that seriously, right? Like, um again, I have a frame of reference here where I knew my daughter was softball scheduled months in advance. Because they needed to book those fields, you know, six months in advance to get availability. And so we're seeing abuse where your window for booking softball, baseball, I can't remember what other sports are through in twenty-three. And you're booking a bunch, but you don't use it, that does then mean those other teams effectively had no access. And so um we can beef up that way, which somewhere in the policy, um and if seventy-two hours isn't enough. There is a range of cancellation periods of two week, up to two weeks, being both two weeks. Um to really give availability to others.
Then part of the reservation draft is like fifty percent upfront. Now granted, some folks can just send you a chat and they're fine getting it back, um but I I haven't been the intent. And I do wonder if, you know. Literally called and said, hey, we ran thirty grand a year, I'm gonna write fifteen grand, just to get a foot in the door, we may hear about it. But again, it's in the policy, it's just. That's one thing, and then the second thing on the reservation blocks, which is great for us, cause they're always like, oh, we wanna get on, well, we haven't heard from this group, we're trying to get them. Shipped together, uh the annual folks, so there's La Croix is there all year, some of the premier soccer team. Which again, it's completely fine, but if we're gonna book the winter season by October one, they get the winter season, right? They don't get their whole year, and then they're gonna have to realize that come break in seasons, they may adjust their schedule. Just a state of being obvious over.
Additional question? I'm gonna do one more and then I'll get back to you. I, well, a quick comment, just that I support, um you know, keeping River View School District programs as. A way to prioritize, just maybe not so high on the list, um personal preference. But my question, it was for clarification about, um there's a blurb about reservation banking or hedging, it's not allowed. And so I was curious if that was something different than what I was thinking of, what if somebody had a reservation and they're buddies with somebody in a different league? And they're like, oh, we're not gonna use that, so you can take it, like, that's not allowed, is that what it's referencing, or is that something else?
Ultimately, what we want is for the fields to be used. And so, well, I have two reasons. So from an optics perspective, we want the fields used, and it is um. It is hard, not just optics, but from a community spirit perspective, to see these fields empty. When people want to use them, and so just philosophically, we want the fields used, so you know, kind of, you know, shift trading or swapping. I would say needs the first goal, but the second goal is these are resources and we collect fees from them. And so we wanna make sure that if there is that swapping, that, you know, AP is paid for that park. And um and that reservation, so I think, you know, we we would still get it, but what we would wanna avoid is the original person. Not canceling in time, potentially not paying a fee, and then saying, oh, but I know the field's open, it's I'm the one that have. And so I'm just kind of thinking about those are the goals, we wanna make sure that we don't incentivize.
Yeah, thanks. Um Director, and then we'll go to a council member now.
And if anybody has a suggestion, better words, or not married, hedging or anything, but that's kind of the intent. The chair, and just prefaceing, like.
Get back, good. Um Councilmember Naflin?
Yeah, my last, I promise it's my last, I have it for. Um just, I am, Director Lenishewski, you referred to, well, we'll hear about it if they don't like it. Right, and so I just started thinking, you know, it's it's really nice if we made sure that we provided a draft to our regular users. Ahead of time before us adopted, just to try to get some feedback ahead of time. Obviously, there might be some things that we say, hey, we wanna try it, we'll see how it works, I know you aren't super happy with it, but we wanna try something. So we can't make everyone happy, but I do think that it would be um. Very fair to make sure that a copy of that is provided to every large user group that we can find, just to see if they have any feedback about it. And I don't know, I can do that, I've done that in the past, where I've reached out and sent copies, but I'm not sure if that is already intended to do that. Whichever one of you wants to go first.
We've done it to the heavy wrencher already.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, and I would say that we can. So this is a first touch and obviously a very draft draft, and so I wanna be mindful of. Getting the regular user, so we already sent it, thank you Director Lenishewski, but this may go through three or four iterations. And so being mindful of when we do that, like. Adoption, we need one more talk to a council, so I. I mean, we can continue to send it each iteration, but my thought would be kind of the last before the vote would be probably the least. Time to send it more formally if we need to.
Other question?
So so folks understand, we're not trying to monopolize or capitalize and all, and get as much rent as possible when this is built, like it was expected that half of the rent would be set aside. Do it again, but still re-carpeting the facility over a ten-month period. Uh we did have that um original manufacturer out, in the last three months, they said the curve is handling conditions very well. Cause we had a ten-year replacement, they didn't commit to like, oh, it'll go way longer, but they they thought it was in great shape. They're still honoring some of their warranty work, you know, some of the stuff that you saw in the last three months, so that's good news, but that was the intent again. And the methodology and theory of council changes are completely fine, required some of the ground visual. Kind of carry that forward and make sure.
Um so in terms of next steps, I took a couple potential changes, I'll work on a new draft. The next draft will also have the facilities embedded in it, I didn't want this to get mired in a really long document that had. The facilities that's already pre-existing, but the next draft will have the facilities part, it'll be a little cleaner, I'll add some of the conference. And then you'll see the concessions policy as in. And so a fuller draft, we can also make modifications of the facilities rental, but I want you to be able to see. The really new stuff in this draft, um so that's what I'm planning for next steps, but if there are other steps that you would like to see.
And for current activities, we are, I don't think this is gonna be done to start the baseball season, so we're gonna try to do the regular. Style of coordination and get them on the books soon, uh we're chomping at the bit. We're not promising this is gonna be done, I don't expect it to be done, so there's no hurry, we do wanna have a solid policy that we start and. Works well, obviously, may have kinks and things change, whatever they're for, we'll be doing.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, to that end, um we haven't worked out with finance yet, all of the, so. Um in terms of the logistics, you know, our website upgrade is going to happen at the end of February. But then we need to work on programming, the online function, we need to work on whether or not, like, how to go about getting credit card payments. And, you know, all the tax implications of the service fee, so. The policy might be done, but that doesn't mean we could necessarily necessarily implement it right away, managing it.
Last question, Ms. Thomas? All right, well, thank you, um just wanna call out, make sure you've seen the written reports and planning calendar. Your agenda, um do we, we have time, would you like to do your city administrator's report and get that done?
Good evening, again, some good night, now to the administrator, um next slide, sorry, oh, yeah. And I will turn it over right away to Director Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor Tomson and members of the community. Uh generally typically can be a little bit slower than, but this year not so much, cause we're just trying to prep for all of our long-range work. Um we did receive a new commercial building application, so from the right-hand corner, that's just a layout plan for it. Um it's kind of a older property spread across street from Park and directly adjacent to the bigger circle. They were, they start that review, the brewery application raised the minimum, we had a really good meeting with them last week. In the lower right-hand corner is about what their building will look like, so definitely that, I'll call it barn, barn, manacular. Which is what we look for in our design guidelines. Um advisory committee applications are under review, uh we have the closing for the car plan, we actually got way more than we can actually handle. So that's, oh, I think a good thing, um the Park Children's Space Plan application closed yesterday. And we have even more people interested in that than the car plan, not surprised. Um we have our first advisory committee meeting, um which is really the focus room for the Park Children's Open Space Plan on two twenty-six. So that's coming up, uh the commercial project at Duval Village, besides include two stories and residential use, so. Uh twelve two-bedroom apartments will grow up there, so I'm not surprised. Uh honestly, they needed to probably do that to pencil out their project, you get funding, because funding is really difficult for non-residential projects. But not impossible, so I think we might do more of that, which is in our goal, the the last, you know, couple of car plans. Um two-bedroom units or or smaller, you know, smaller building, smaller units that we're really looking for. Even under our, we're a part of housing and housing strategy, so we were happy to see that. Uh we're continuing to make progress on web application, we had a couple of hiccups, I apologize honestly for that. Some of our items were live, some some of them were not, and we're also transitioning to our new website, so. Stay tuned for that, but we did some more work kind of last week, so we're we're getting close. Uh we attended a webinar on working with tools, and that was really riveting and exciting, um really good trends. Actually put together a presentation that we'll be seeing um in the spring. Then we'll be looking at kind of the policies that were drafted by Congress at that time, I did share with the administrator. That we are getting quite a few comments on it, because through the enforcement process. Um a lot, we've seen a lot of compliance, which is great, I mean, doing policy work. But what has happened then is anybody that has rented has now received a notice that their rental has been canceled, so. We've gotten quite a few emails on that. Um our second draft of our sign code is under internal review, so that's really good, our comments in term are moving next week. Um our first draft of our permanent processing policy has been completed, and we're gonna start working on the second draft. Uh our content survey um is under review, so we're gonna be doing yet another survey. This one's gonna be longer and, you know, more about rounded, so it'll go not include parks, cause we've already done that, but it'll include everything else. And we're looking at including some arts and culture questions in the survey with. Some point later, later down the road, and I believe our cultural commission is there meeting next week. Uh we will be appointing a new planning commissioner, we had more planning commissioners on the last week. Um but we're already ready to do the. We had a really strong um application that we did in the past, so I'm excited about that. And maybe we're gonna be on our conference meeting, because we're like, hey, you can't be a planning commissioner, you wanna be on the conference meeting. Well, now it's turned out. This is large enough for me to see on the team with that. What we need to turn up, we need that for. It was a little slow for permits uh in January, but we're not surprised. January is always slow is what happened. We had greater prices, our fees. So we get a flood into summer and then January and February to think what it will be at light. Um, we do have twenty permits uh waiting for pickup, and so there's quite a few that are ready and we'll probably have about another dozen in the next couple of weeks waiting for pickup. We have seventy eight under review. Um, so that's, that's exciting. Um, we issued total thirty seven permits, resident, non-resident combined. And then uh January, I turned it fifty six. It would be pretty, I heard January, it looks pretty cold. And we had some cold weather and some rainy weather and some more weather. So when it's really cold, there are certain specifications for certain things. Uh, it's always surprising it was highest and it's. Thank you.
Uh, we have a question, Councilmember Supple.
Yeah, the border, where and when is that planned to be opened?
I have a crystal ball. Um, on the. One forty third and Main Street, so right across from Dubal Village, where the old their barn was. So that field up there, they're actually doing um a farm approach. They're going to be putting in an orchard this year and then some other other. Um, areas, they'll actually like put some blueberries in and raspberries and those types of things. It's going to be really, I think, really cool and amazing. Um, and then it's bound um up at First Avenue, so right across from sixty five degrees, which should feel to be, obviously there's the first building is getting ready for off.
Councilmember Nata, I have a question about the, the commercial application. Do we have any idea what the intent of the building would be? Yes, the critical data. Okay. Across from the park. Yeah. Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we will turn it over to Director Lanzeski to do the public work.
Uh, good evening, so, Mr. Mayor on. Back in the, people in the desk get both works. Uh, so quick update, the transportation improvement board, the D and B is doing anything, their complete streets program. Uh, so it's kind of like a direct act and money fills up and there are intent for gap projects. So running out of space here on the left. This is now what eligible under this secondary program that they're going to reissue. So ADA ramps, uh, whether they're new or we want retrofit. Sidewalk gaps, missing length, crystal, uh, priority, rapid rectangular flashing beacons, RFPs. Uh, restriping, so you can include road diets and other things like that. We're making things narrower. Um. Paint not physical, elements, some expandable bike lanes. And then construction ready projects, so. This came to us like two days ago. We have to preliminarily apply on our first. We certainly have new policy that doesn't necessarily dictate us coming. But we were going to share our thoughts and make sure you're all on board on what we're going to have to collect. I think at this point, um, we have options. One is going to be kind of implementing some of the funds we need for one forty second. That can then be saved off out of our weak taxi fund, you know, for this big third avenue or a different project. Because they have to be. You really don't have anything else in the end to go. So, uh, we'll have an item on that in the next meeting. Um, or else we'll come in early March and do the annual public hearing on the stormwater report. Uh, our program moving forward on that. I don't know what else to call it, if anybody likes. Oh, uh, but yeah, we're working with Cynthia on that. Uh, we're working on a vehicle and that is a used vehicle, but it is a much higher end vehicle fitting in our budget, so we're trying it out from our rental group. Um, I've been working with waste management and we thought it would be neat if we could. Somehow get compostable back in our soil. So where the soil, where the compostable gray barrel stuff goes. Cleaning and then turns into soil on north. They are more than willing, if we show the trucks to sell our stuff with composted topsoil. For free to participate in going into our factories. So when I say we're going to use that, but they, they said that we can. I don't know the soil composition, if it's great for what we're doing or not, but we'll look into that again. Trying to be partners and I think if the people do where their compost went, maybe they do it more. They saw it more, called it after the little QR code or something. Which kudos to the clerk, I saw the QR code on the bottom of your. Uh, agenda, but here. Accident over the weekend, this is third and Dorothy. I haven't read the report, I don't know which direction he's going to go. There's a power pedestal there and a meter and then our um irrigation controller. It's not necessarily important for today, but. That power stand would help offset our cost for third avenue redesign. We have landscape irrigation there. So we're working with police as well as electricians to at least put the power heads to the back. Make the property area safe. Go from there. Next article. You know, the carryout too is a two rows, so it can seat four, it can be helpful for children, settling both into the park for music nights or other things like that, so. We thought it was a, a good win. I mean. Uh, working on finalizing this go for Big Rock Ballfields, doing our best to get that into an affordable number. As we ask for many things, sometimes they pan out. So we reached out to the King County Collective, we're calling it for regional, I think it was through one of the council members office. Uh, regional electrification improvements throughout the county. So if you're going to name it that, apparently we were selected and we got this congratulated or emailed the other day. Um, the good is that we're selected and going to be approved. The bad news is it's not approval in their first round of funding, but they expect to have more funding. To be awarded in July. So we will learn what that means more in the coming weeks and then by summer reach the bell with the dollar that's been. Uh, when we're better managers, the wrestler is working on a kind of simple app for two thousand first hand from PSE. Regardless of any other programming they have, so that is new. So we'll be looking at some of those funds. Again, we haven't committed anything other looking at the design for those implementations down at our park. I did take a poll the other day that a lady was like, I was insulted when I could charge my car and I couldn't do well, nobody said charge my car. Yeah, she called. Good for her. Uh, we're working with the school districts and specifically Chair Val Elementary's principal has been talking to your city engineer. About speeding and other activities in the school zone, so we'll be looking at some other things uh. Help down there, increase uh presence with some police and. Maybe some candidate and correcting things to kind of road diet that area. It's really wide down there, so you'd certainly feel like you can drive on a. Superhighway, um. Uh, remodel, bottom screen here is taking shape. The exterior is about done. They're hanging the awnings. Beautifully coming. Uh, that graphical rendition here is kind of three D mechanical. That'll give us any steam. For the building. Uh, if you look closely, you can see the canoe. We're going to be hanging the canoe in the uh atrium area, building, so. If that was city hall in a non really displayable location, and then here it's kind of permanently housed and seen and uh will fit nicely. Very won't get their head in the turn and their coffee to do it over there. I think that wraps it up for a couple words. Um, I didn't have. Oh, emergency, yeah, so emergency coordinator, Patrick, is uh steering and running safety, safety committee, which is an all departmental required committee. We have done that. Pretty periodically over the past year, so it's nice to have that um. Direct PM and coordinating and emphasizing safety. He's taking a CPR class to re-certify himself to then be able to train all our staff in CPR. Uh, for policy, we're all supposed to be searched with first field responders, we're supposed to be CPR trained and most of us have had it expired initially.
We have a quick question.
I think, yes, good you. I'm glad to see that you addressed the Cherry Valley Elementary and being crosswalked, if I had a. This is my topic week and was very upset to talk to everyone, um, specifically about the crosswalk at one thirty. One sixty third and and Cherry Valley that. They wait forever to be able to cross, but people just flow past them.
Yeah. You know, rapid flashing beacons might be helpful. Um. Haven't told planning yet, but there are in. In cities that are immediately jaded or few lights. And we are going to be cleaning the dirt. And by cleaning up, I mean cutting them up from ground. So if you walk like two seventy eight, you have trees literally three feet on kind of from a light post. And those aren't armed, like the globe is sitting, once you're fifty feet off the ground, it's buried in the building. So we're going to do our best to kind of limit taking whole trees down, but. In an effort to not make some ugly ashtray, because there is light on the corner. It is right on the crosswalk, but it is very true. So there are a lot of those things. Unintended consequences of trying to do that in, but we'll be pointing. Trees out and limbs. It's not this there.
Uh, Councilmember Shaper.
Steve, the uh, the, the, the potential funding from the uh, I guess through the King County Collective.
The technical department of common grant, yeah, part of the common, yeah, they would, would, and I, I realize we don't know how much to do, but would.
We could put that towards the sixty thousand infrastructure. Costs that we have.
It's not going to offset that cost as much as you can.
And same with P is.
I have one more question, if somebody else does.
Listen, this is related to the uh Cherry Valley Road speeding. Uh, I, I know we discussed before and I, I realize we're trying to discuss it now. But I'm still very interested in uh. Some kind of mechanism where we could uh. One, my preference would be actually ticket uh Spears uh automatically. Uh, two, if the state law does not allow to ticket them at the very least. Send the owner of that vehicle a uh warning. Letter or some type of letter, so to tell you, foot and such day, foot and such place. Your car was speeding, you know, whatever, ten miles an hour feeling. I have not given up on that idea and I think in some future day we should address that.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Shaper, were you thinking about a uh potentially getting traffic? Sorry, chief, those automatic.
Brand enforcement for schools.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'm actually thinking even broader than schools, having something that could potentially be portable. We could put it in different places around the, around the city as needed. Uh, but you know, in a, in a uh. Uh, a zone like, like the school district, even a permanent installation would be, would be a good idea.
We can, um, I'll talk to chief and we can get an update on that and what our opportunities are throughout the city.
Great, great, thank you.
Councilmember Supple.
Yeah, I received a complaint on the. And I'm sure two of all controls is traffic light or not, but it's on Main Street and, and Big Rock Road. Where uh, that's like eight o'clock at night. People are turning right who want to go, are turning north on two oh three because the light doesn't turn, they allow them to go south, feel great. I'm just wondering if that's been an issue with anybody or anybody else has heard that, or, or we probably don't control that light.
No, we can certainly report incidents. So if you're saying you're on Big Rock westbound, you can't go north?
Uh, south.
South? You're going to lost the phase?
That's wonderful. I know that happened to me personally, but I've heard from several people that they eventually get tired of waiting. Um, so they turn.
Okay. Yeah, we can, if this is reported, we don't really audit it. They are a lot of us, but they're.
Oh, okay.
Just a quick time check. Um, do we have more slides still on your report? One more. Do you think we can make it or should we pause and?
Okay, yes, we got it. Very short. Okay.
Uh, very short. Uh, just as an update, our finance department is finalizing second round interviews for the account position. We got really good applicant pool. We're very excited. We got three finalists. Um, so uh we will be hiring soon. Our new website launch is um planned for February twenty eight, twenty twenty four. Uh, we looked at a lot of different cities. Um, one I would suggest you look at, because it might look similar to what we're spending is Boffel. Um, so, uh, I know chief, lots of Boffel, and they, they provide really good exemplars for us. Uh, so, uh, we did get uh new photographs for our website. Um, it's going to be far more cleaned up, the goal being more user friendly. Um, one of the things we're thinking about is embedding um. Things throughout the website, whether that's a little grass or something, and doing some fun community event that says, hey, go to our website. If you can locate all eight of whatever we put into the website, or if you can find through policies, something to get the community interested in the new website, so. Uh, communications coordinator, and we're looking at about to draw interest to the US.
Just, you know, not being patient to wait and see it, but one thing I did discuss in addition to the fine event, the city about. You know, nondiscrimination policies with having some type of mission statement for a set of principles on the website is that. In scope, um, design any redmond, other curcling of this, but it's nice to have it front and center on the website. Let's reinforce that path, but if it's not.
So the ask is still there and being considered with the idea that when you all have your council retreat and you come up with what you would like that to say. We can easily put it on the list. And I think right now we're looking at council retreat for March. And so, yeah, absolutely. We have, we can create space for it. Um, the nice thing about the new website and the new city plus launch is it's far more usable than our kind of integrated system we've got. I think we're at least ten years expired on the whole platform, so the new one is far more configurable. And then as a final point, um, tomorrow I'm meeting with uh Eastside Fires, Chief and Deputy Chief. To find out more of what is happening at the fire department in terms of administration, so. And we'll provide an update when I have. Thank you. So if council have any more questions, I just asked that you maybe hold them in the little over council meeting and you do council reports to ask them, or we can kind of the open the city administrator report item if you want. Um, and with that, we will, with no objections, we'll adjourn at six fifty eight.
Thank you.
Partner, the city council meeting at seven thirty PM, uh, would you please rise and bring the lights? Pledge allegiance to the God. And to your beloved. Sir, could you please take the role?
Sergeant. Mayor Robert Lander. Mayor Lieutenant Henry.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Schaper, here. Mr. Murphy, here. Mr. Chappell, here. Ms. Naughton.
Here.
Ms. Spooker.
Here. Okay, we have a court. There are additions and corrections to the agenda. One, I will add, if there are no objections, councilmember Isaacson, excusing him from this meeting, he did let us know he had a work on play. Not seeing anything else, um, would anyone like to move to adopt the agenda? Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. All aye. All those opposed, please say no. All right, the agenda is adopted, so the next step, we have our presentations for this evening. First up being the Duval Police Department, end of your report with acting chief police Brian Keller.
Thank you, uh, welcome and good evening, members of council. All directors and employees from the uh, City of Duval, and those of attendance in the audience. Uh, as you can see, there's a nice picture of our agency there in one of our patrol cars. But um, I've been on the position since December eighteen. And it's been a very interesting. And change for where I came from the city of Duval, but I can tell you right now that it's been an honor and a pleasure to be in this position during every time. Excellent. So why do we do what we do, I have the mission statement for the Duval Police Department on board here. As some of this pertains to the aspect of. Our involvement with our community, we do strive to, we can work on the quality of life. And to make sure that it's safe for those that live and work here. But also, we talked about architecturalism on our preparedness, integrity and positivity. I try to stress that daily with the people that I work with on a daily basis. Uh, we do strive to do our best at that, and we go through those process, but. This is kind of an art star, this is where we strive to meet the needs of the community and more and more. Excellent, please. So here's some of our two thousand twenty-three achievements, uh, the implementation of the Body One Camera program. Was done in two thousand twenty-three. Uh, we had a slightly remodel of the police department building. And to tell you the truth, it looks very nice inside, um. Amazing, we could do some banks, walls, um, and do some of the flooring and, and do some modifications inside the building, we made it. A little bit more productive for the personnel we have. Uh, they're very appreciative of the fact that we went through this process with them. Um, I didn't see it before, but I did hear that there were some. Some severe needs, and they understand that we've done the best we can, um, under the circumstances we have. Uh, we tried to implement a paperless process, and uh, part of that has been implemented, we still have some work to do on that. And we talked about paperless, we talked about the aspect of that. Um, the ability for us to maintain files and file cabinets, inside that building, we don't have that much. Um, it is a very small facility, the aspect of the paperwork that we have to maintain. Um, we don't have the vicinity or the ability to maintain it in there, so scanning a lot of that in and implementing the. Ability to have a lot of that electronic, it has been a very important process that we went through, um. During the last half of this year, the last half of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, department policies mandates and updates have been completed, there are a number of updates that occur annually that are pertaining to. Uh, legislative changes as well as mandates required by. Uh, trading commissions and those that we have to comply with. Uh, they did go through a number of mandates and updates with their policy. And we're still working on that process, uh, and I've had a chance to review some of the policy. And there are some things that are very generic, but some things that I want to make sure I direct that exactly how we proceed and do. Our, our performance in the city of Duval, so. Two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget, um, we've implemented a, a very good portion of it. The end of last year, we made some adjustments of the budget, and I know that we're following it. Based on some of the things I see, might have to make some more adjustments later on this year, but. I will work with the city to make sure that it's done, both of them, and taking care of things next month. So here's some of our media highlights, um, I've met with everybody in our department. And one of the questions I asked, what does the city of Duval and the Duval Police Department do well? And uh, we're sounding everybody fully in agreement that we do community events well. We work well with the community and our involvement with the community is. Is probably one of the luxuries that we have, working for a city of this size. Um, with the call that we do have. And so, as you see, there's some highlights we have up there, such as the airplane celebration. Easter recon, Duval Daisy, which is an all hands on deck. Uh, process, we use the sand blast summer stage. National night out, I know that we did a number of events uh, last year. I know that we're quality experienced this year when we come around. Um, we did some uh, work with uh, fundraiser for Seattle Cancer Alliance, and the Main Street Trick or Treat, it's always just. You know, that, you know, we extend very well here, and looking forward to. To see how that shakes up this next year, uh, this year when we go through it. And Lab Duval, that's always an important event that happens within the city. Uh, we're involved in some food drives that occur, various food programs now. It's great for our officers and personnel to give back, especially um, when we run through some of those times where. People that may have to struggle a little bit, uh, spending some time with those food drives is always important. And we are involved with two shop with the cop events, uh, one occurs in Willow, and one occurs in, in Monroe. Uh, where we take um, children, and we actually work with them and take them shopping with us. And work through that process, so it's always been a really great event. Um, another of officers in the region, my involvement, so we'll keep that process, excellent. Uh, as you can imagine, some of the things we have to do to maintain our status as a law enforcement agency. And also to make sure our officers are prepared to meet some of the events that occur, um, some of those maybe unfortunate events. Uh, but we hope never happen here, we do have a lot of training that we've accomplished in two thousand twenty-three. Some of those uh, are listed here, this is not an all-inclusive uh, list, but uh, we are mandated by the state to. Um, now, all of our officers have at least twenty-four hours of mandated training throughout the year. Um, but we do often go well above that. In the training hours that we try to utilize our officers in, we have them involved in. So active sheer training at Cedar Crest High School was a, a very good event from when I talked with the school district. On arrival here, they felt that it was uh, well done, and uh, the officers that I've. Spoke with as well as those in the region believe that it was a great event, it was held up there, it's always nice to be able to. Uh, talk about those type of events, but also to uh, have some type of practical exercise in a. An area that you need to be familiar with in case something you guys don't have, but it's mildly important. Interview interrogation training is uh, was needed for all of the officers that. What we have within our agency, and so looking at some of that training this year. Uh, voter safety force, uh, for law enforcement, as you've seen during some of the summer months, we do have some of those just keys out there. And as part of that aspect of making sure that we have. Uh, proper training for officers that are involved in that. Uh, one of the things that's required and mandated by um, RCWA and WACS. Uh, Washington Administrative Code is to make sure that our officers every three years attend some type of patrol tactics training. Uh, that's twenty-four hours of mandated training that has to occur. Uh, we now have patrol tactics instructor in our department. So it allows us to facilitate some of that training a little bit easier for our officers as we go through that. Uh, one of the things that we always have to increase is. Our firearms instructors, we had one, um, now this, next year we have two, it's gonna facilitate the need and probably cut down some of the overtime that we have. For that type of a need. Um, we've attended Amber Training regarding promoting workplace free harassment, discrimination retaliation. So also a number of legal updates, L G D two, uh, for competency and effective communication, all those are. Uh, training that's sponsored by the Criminals Training Commission. It's mandated for our officers to attend those trainings throughout the year, we're conducting that, a lot of that is online. Uh, which makes it very, it could be interesting for us to accomplish the training. Historical intersection of race and policing is also a part of what is due to be. Uh, is also one thing that's required by state law to attend, uh, and accomplish during the annual processes. Uh, we've had a couple of people attend the field training officers academy, which is required for us to. Train the new officers that come on board, it's a very uh, intensive training, it's a forty hours of training for that individual to go through, but. Uh, it is a very rewarding training, because they see a lot of the. Areas where training programs have failed, and also get a lot of tips and. And information as to how they're going to be a better field training officer, make sure they. And bring those new officers up and make them very productive in that process. Uh, some of our first level supervisors have gone through some first level supervision. And annually, we go through some emergency vehicle operations, which. Uh, is mandated and required for us to be able to perform some essential duties we have. Next slide, please. Uh, it's a little difficult to see on this uh, here, but those are the calls for service uh. Comparison between two thousand twenty-two, two thousand oh three. We had thirty-three hundred and fourteen calls for service in two thousand twenty-two. And two thousand twenty-three, we had thirty-eight hundred and ninety. As you can be uh, uh, seeing that graph right there at the beginning of the year, at least for the first half of the year. Our calls for service uh, was exceptionally higher than it was in two thousand and twenty-two. There's a number of factors that um. Deal with that, uh, some of that has to do with changing population and change in the environment, but I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that. During that period of time, we were fully staffed and we had a number of personnel that. Were actively engaging with the public and, and trying to do some proactive work to make sure that. Uh, we weren't just reactive and responding to calls for service, but actually also trying to make sure that we can. Um, find some of those issues and maybe intercede before it becomes a call for service, something that we have to be involved in. Uh, some of that is probably it's capital related, and we'll talk about that as we go through this, but. As you notice, as I went through the second half of the year and primarily the third or the fourth quarter of the year. Uh, calls for service and um. Uh, the agency went down significantly, and a lot of that has to do with that, that we were extremely shorthanded during that period of time. Uh, we'll talk about that as we go through this presentation, but. Uh, when you become that shorthanded and you were close to thirty percent under staff during that period of time. You become a reactive type of law enforcement agency. And we also find that probably the calls for service that we run into now are more complex. It require a longer period of time for our officer to be engaged with that type of recall. Uh, because there's other requirements that usually uh, running, whether it's obtaining a search warrant. Whether it's uh, preparing the case by obtaining more statements. Um, and there's more expectation that our cases are going to be more thorough and complete than they have in the past, so. Uh, the time of handling a DUI arrest for somebody arrested for drug driving. Of only being uh, an hour and a half, that works into three, four, five, six hours. Um, because oftentimes you're having to do a search warrant associated with that. And you may have to do some mandatory booking of that individual in jail, and. Um, there's a lot of time to spend just trying to make sure that we do things thoroughly. Appropriately, to make sure that our cases are complete and accurate. Next slide, please. So the top ten calls for service, you can see the numbers behind that. Uh, as you can see, traffic stops are kind of the important step that we take. In Duval, uh, but you'll also notice as we talk through this process and some of the information provided to you in your packet. Um, traffic stops do occur a lot. Um, but the aspect of how we enforce that. Uh, is a lot of officer discretion. Uh, one of the primary roles of uh, completing traffic stops is to change individuals' behavior. And uh, some of that can occur by issuing warnings, sometimes it does require us, but there's some enforcement actually taken. Uh, but traffic stops uh, is something that we do quite a bit out here, um. And sufficient, the next one, line, community policing. Which can include a lot of the events that we talked about, but also the aspect of. Somebody reaching out to the community, showing up at the school, maybe talking to a business, maybe having some conversations about. Uh, situations and having somebody contact us on the street and ask me a few questions. A lot of those are community policing events. Direct and enforcement, uh, are some of those things I'd be talking about earlier regarding the school zones. Or something where we're talking about crosswalk enforcement, that's what's called direct enforcement, that's times when we go out there and actually start to find. A specific area, target, some type of. Uh, the complaint, the violation that's occurring. Our person contacts, we do have a lot of person contacts, um, some of those occur a lot at night, um, when. Uh, our officers out there kind of uh, wonder why somebody's in a specific area. Uh, or. Um, implements criminal activity, you want to make sure that we're out there, having those contacts. Some of those are what we call social, right, uh, we go out and we help. I see somebody in the street, I might say, and go out and say, I'm gonna talk to some people and say hi. I'll be doing a lot of those social contacts in the near future when I start talking to some of the people in the community and making sure that. I kind of listen to what's going on in the garage, you can do that on a regular basis, to go out there and have those social contacts and personal contacts. Nine eleven hangups is still a pretty important. Uh, and high number that we go to, uh, a lot of those are. Um, mandated that we have to make sure that everything's safe, some of those. That we get for nine eleven hangups are things that we can't respond to because. Uh, it might be a cell phone, that somebody has dialed nine one one, it's traveling throughout the city. May not be something that we have a pinpoint area to follow up on. Follow-ups are very important for us, it's not uncommon for us to have a case that. We've dealt with and handled, but we have to continue follow-up, and we have to do, whether it's a request from the prosecutor's office. Whether it's um, something that we have looked at and we want to make sure that we. Kind of uh, pull it over and make sure it's correct and, and then appropriately. Alarms and agency assists are still things that we are involved in, it could be an agency assist, we'll assist our, our officer at that call. Or maybe another agency coming through our area, or CPS, or some other. Or maybe another agency coming through our area or CPS or some other type of agency that needs assistance for officers who. Uh, and traffic offenses, those are more of the criminal offenses, not just the infractions of the right, but those are. Uh, whether it's somebody that is DUI, whether it's somebody that's driving with suspended license, who are prescribed riding those type of events. Uh, navigation driving, that's what those traffic offenses. Next slide please. So here's some of the things that uh, impacted some of the last part of last year. Um, and we talked about uh, staffing, where we are and where we're headed. So as you see up there at the top, uh, we had four positions filled in two thousand twenty-three. But we had three separations within the agency. Two of those were officers that were hired. And one of those was our record manager that um, left us um, at the end of last year, resigned and took their own position. The last quarter of two thousand twenty-three, and it says right there, we had twenty-six percent staffing shortages due to severities and separations. Uh, that significantly impacts our agency, uh, not only in our ability to perform our tasks, but also as. Uh, you maybe were morale and um. The ability for officers to really do what they want to do in the city, because when I have a conversation with them. Uh, they really want to have that involvement with the community, but if they're um. Staffed very low, it's very difficult for them to have that available plan where they can go out there and have those. Contacts with the community. So as we look for the outlook for two thousand twenty-four, starting uh, this part of the year. Uh, we're already starting with thirty percent shortages. Uh, one is due to extended leave, which. Uh, he has an injury that not currently away from work. And we still have one vacancy that we have to fill. We're in the process of. Interviewing individuals and starting a background on some five-year-old candidates, hopefully fill that position. Um, but I had interviews with a number of the officers in our agency. I know that there are three people that are talking about uh, potentially leaving the agency. I know that. Uh, some of that has to do with uh, some instability that occurred last year, but I know that. Um, one of my goals is to create stability within the agency, and I think that. When I had some follow-up conversations with those three people that had told me that they were planning on leaving, a lot of them are having some second thoughts. So um, I think we have one individual that. Is going to complete his twentieth year this year. He has told me that he's going to retire this year, but he also told. Uh, the agency to retire him last year, so um, we're hoping to see how things go and, and work through this process. Um, and I'm hoping to replace the records manager for this quarter this year. And um, we have already started the process of updating our selection process. And uh, my intention is, is my fingers crossed a little bit, but I want to be a full staff by June of this year. Um, and that's, I believe is a very viable and, and um. The goal that I think we can achieve pretty well going through this process. Next slide please. So here's some of the actions we have on, uh, and this is just the tip of the iceberg. Of things that we're looking at to try to uh, work in this upcoming year. I'll give you a little preview of some of the things that we have going on, so. Uh, at the top of the list, as you can see, it's becoming fully staffed. I think that's highly important towards our agency. We. We still run into some issues occasionally where, um, even with the staff, when we have one person down. That we're below what we classify as a minimal staffing and we'll be able to fill some of those positions by overtime. I know that impacts our agency very, very strongly and I think it also impacts. Uh, the wellness of the personnel that work for our agency. Uh, in the process right now, redefining the administrative assistant records manager position. I think that uh, the definition we have for those positions. Can be uh, looked at by extensively. I'm on the process of doing that right now to make sure that. Uh, the positions as they are currently defined. Are corrected to reflect what uh, they can be smaller future needs and how it works with our agency. Um, we're talking about. Selection process. We've looked at some different vendors, we've looked at the process we utilize, and I think that there's some different things to do. Somewhat to make sure that it's a little bit more streamlined, also to make sure that. Uh, it is more uh, competitive and make sure that meets some of our needs for finding the right person for the job. Uh, we're in the process of conducting a full evidence audit. Um, usually whenever a police chief comes on board or whenever we lose a. Property manager, which we did at the end of last year, it's important to conduct an evidence audit. Not necessarily that you're looking for things to be wrong. But it's just always nice to have that good baseline when it occurs. So whenever we have a change in that process, it's important to do that and we're in the process of. Uh, utilizing some personnel from uh, Boston, uh, in the police department, and I'm very um. Very well aware of how they handle their operations there and, and they're in the process of making sure that our audit. Um, and all the items that we have of high value there and making sure that there's some different things that we can change. I know there's a um, very limited ability for us to maintain evidence of our department by its life. Uh, but I think there's some things we can do to kind of make that a little bit better, as well as probably um. There's a destruction process to utilize. We have to go through that process with a number of, we'll free up some space. Uh, as just of their implementing digital evidence intake process. Um, presently, the way it's done is all done by paper and a logbook. Um, it's a little archaic and the process of law enforcement and we have the ability to um. Upgrade our system and at the end of our audit, we're going to implement a digital evidence intake process. Uh, that way the digital process will allow to be uploaded directly into our um. Records management system versus trying to do things by pen and paper, which uh, can be very complicated. But a lot of that to happen, I think is going to uh, streamline the pro. Streamline the process and make sure that um, it's a lot more accurate than what we have right now. Um, and see what they're creating stability and retention. Um, at times the, the agency um, has been. A little bit difficult to retain some of the individuals. I talked to a couple of people and they. Carried the agency when we lost eight personnel one time, so um. I want to make sure I work through some of that retention aspect. And I think giving some of that stability and making sure that people understand the process and the expectations I have. As well as working to the, the agency to kind of um. Work on some of these other issues, I think will help towards that retention and stability. At the end of last year, we made a budget amendment to upgrade the firearms, uh, and that's in the process right now. Um, and we also have a severe need for some low lethality munitions. And what I'm talking about is um, something that we can use for. Uh, de-escalation tool. It's not necessarily, when I say munitions, it's not talking hand grenades and explosives, it's just like. Uh, some type of tool that we utilize that. Um, is very common in law enforcement that allows us to. Create some distance to de-escalate uh, situations where we can put our officers at an advantage where. Uh, lethal munitions such as firearms may not be required to be used. So um, we'll evaluate that and go through that process. With upgrades and replacements, we did have a car that was totaled um. Responding to a call in the first part of December, still in the process of trying to locate a vehicle to replace that. Uh, defining that some of our fleet have equipment in that is starting to fail. Uh, we've utilized in the past um. Well, the ability to recycle equipment uh, from car to car. Um, in agencies I've worked at before, and we found that that's really not a viable option. We find that um, even the electronic equipment such as the lights and sirens does have a life expectancy. And at times, uh, we're finding out that, and we went through this process before. Is that we're finding that things have uh, been installed and probably the third car are starting to fail. And so we have lights that don't work, we have sirens that don't work, we have. Radios that have been upgraded and some of those radios need to be repaired, so. We've tried to be a really good steward of uh, the finances of the city, but. They, that we're finding some of those issues are in terms of. Some of their, so I'm honest that we're, we need to probably look at some of those issues. Leadership development has always been of high importance for me, but it's also of high importance for our agency. Not only do we have to develop and make sure the current leaders we have. Are uh, meeting some of those current needs and, and becoming better leaders. Through mentoring or through training, but we also have to develop the future leaders within our agency, so. Um, leadership development is a high, high important level for me and. Um, and whether you know this or not, I do instruct leadership within the state for a lot of the new supervisors and managers to come on board. Uh, we will utilize some of that knowledge and that experience to kind of make sure our personnel are kind of. Coming up to some of the near standard and becoming lifelong students of leadership is what I'm talking about. Uh, I have on the list there a long executive management assistant program, which is called Lean Map. It's a study through. The Washington Association of Chiefs and Sheriffs. And um, I have requested a, a study to be completed and they're coming in in July. As it stands right now, a lot of that is to confirm some of the issues that I've found within the agency to make sure that we're correcting the right things. And heading in the right direction, but. It's another set of eyes that comes into the agency and verifies um, that what we're doing is within industry, industry standards, but also. Um, may make some suggestions that probably can uh, make our agency better. Um, I've found a number of those things and a lot of that has to do with agencies that go through accreditation. We're not near that part. Of being an accredited agency, but a lot of the things we look at are things that are looked at during accreditation and. Where I come from, uh, we've been an accredited agency for about the last twelve years. And so uh, I know that process, I know some of those issues that we work through and. And this is just another set of eyes that come through. They have executives from the area that come in for a day. And uh, they evaluate all the sections of our agency as well as have a lot of conversation with me. Give me a little uh, idea of what they're looking at when they leave and then they prepare a written report and evaluation that. I can share with you and, and the council regarding this process and. Uh, to make sure that they know where we're going and some of the issues that you might want to consider. And then uh, the last thing I have on this list right here is implement an employee development plan. Uh, one of the things that we look at our agency is sometimes personnel come on board. And um, it's very difficult for them to uh, become better at what they do. Uh, part of that is because the training is just not available, but also that uh, it costs a little bit of money. Uh, they get done through some of these training, but they also need to have some of that. Uh, practical time to be able to uh, utilize the training that we have. And sometimes the calls for service here. Um, don't allow them to have those reps for repetitions. When they go through that process to be able to do that, so. Um, having some type of employee development plan in place. Which all worked through a lot of the employees that we have on boards and also some of the regional agencies we have around here. Uh, I think is highly important towards making our agency better. Uh, next slide please. It's okay. Here we are. Questions?
Council, what questions do you have?
And not really a question, more of a comment, but uh. I would like to, to recognize and congratulate Chief Keller and all the officers for the accomplishment in two thousand. Twenty-four years. Uh, we did a lot of good things uh, this, this year and uh. Uh, I want to make sure that's recognized by uh, by everyone here and uh. Overall, and to be all, and also the two thousand twenty-four plan, uh, that looks great. Me, uh, focusing on some of the things that perhaps haven't been focused on well in the, in the past. Having a third-party comment and uh. And, and look at things is a, is a really big deal and very, very helpful, so thanks for uh, exchanging.
Yeah, I, I want to kind of finish this with just one comment that I also that category is. That uh, the men and women of the Duval, we, we are disturbed whenever I talk to them. They, they come to your phones and um, and they, a lot of them will stay here for that reason. They're liking the feel of it, you know, the likely aspect of that. Um, Duval is, the police department is very well respected within the community. It's always a, a pleasure to be a law enforcement officer in the city that um. That understands that it's a difficult job at times, but also respects the agency and. We also know that we have to gain that respect by the performance that we do, but. Um, it does make it a lot easier for them to come in and put the badge on and. And, and go out and do police work when they know that. Um, the persons that they serve in the community they serve. Does understand some of the issues they have, but also um, does respect the job that they do and. And welcome them into the communities.
Councilmember, Marsha?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little more of a comment and, and. Councilmember Shaffer and myself and Mayor Cortez, we're part of the Public Safety, you know, commission. We obviously restructured the way our committees work and engagement, uh. And just with a lot of the, the. For lack of a better word, the, the churn, the changes over the last year, I, I just from a council perspective. This is both for the city administrator as well, you know, if there's an opportunity for council to reengage, uh. Right now, I know you're putting a lot of pressure in place, so we don't obviously want to get in the middle of that process, but. I think I speak for myself and some other council members, if we can assist in that process, either at the. External standing board, uh, you know, assist the, the city administrator in terms of taking some, some things off of, of uh. Of your plate in terms of engagement, I think we would both welcome the opportunity to reengage. Uh, with uh, with the agency and staff as you find opportunities for that to happen, so. Again, we're just want to put that out on the, on the table. I think, you know, we would like to get involved rather than sort of. Uh, being sort of the last link in the chain sometimes from a communication perspective, uh, so when the opportunities are. Volunteering myself, I'm sure there's other people who are welcoming on the team.
That, that's one of the things I didn't uh, put up here. I have a very long list. Uh, of things to go, but um, part of it is making sure that I. I cover a few things with our agency first and make sure it's very stable and then. I know that um, my conversations with the city administrator as well. Um, and some members of the council, that, that's my intention is to uh, reengage not only with. City itself, but council and the community, but I think that uh, we lost some of that, but that's. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Cruzal? I'm just going to second everybody's. Thank you for you stepping in. I really appreciate your demeanor and the guidance that you've given. This part of the year that you really find are, I'll share.
Well, my expectations are high, uh, but they're not unreasonable and um, but I'm not the one that does a lot of the work. It's uh, the work is done by the men and women that work over there and. And I'll give them the tools and I'll give them the guidance and I'll get them in the right direction, but. Um, there's going to be some uh, work that we're all going to have to do and I think there are something that we, we'll work through together.
And I just have one question, because there was a term I wasn't quite sure of. The duty to intervene, is that like, is it neglect or when you have a safe environment or self-defense?
So there's um, there's a requirement regarding state law for. Uh, police officers to, when a use of force is done. That if um, that use of force is excessive, the officers have to intervene and make sure that they protect. Uh, sanctity of life and go through that process and um. It can be a very difficult step for a new officer to have to do. Um, and I think you've seen that somewhere nationwide and. We're pretty well out here. We do a really good job in, in the state of Washington, but. You've seen some of those issues where other officers have not stepped in when. Things aren't being done appropriately. Um, and so there's a mandate for us to make sure that we have some training to make sure that officers know that. Um, they can do that, that they have to do that and um, that they'll be respected for that, as well as if I respond to. Uh, Redmond and see uh, use of force, I have to intervene there if I believe it's excessive, so there's a number of requirements here.
Thank you.
You bet.
Other questions?
Um, seeing all, just thank you so much. That was a great presentation and thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation is interim mobile food unit ordinance with Director Thomas.
Good evening, councilmembers of our community and for staff. And this might be a little bit like deja vu. We've talked several times about mobile food units. We uh, are on our second interim ordinance. To allow units to be within the city in certain places. And we're now just over a year implementing the interim ordinance and that's going to be expiring here. In about the next eight weeks, and so we've been going through credit commission, looking at the policy. And so we are now prepared to have our last workshop with city council and then go to a public hearing. Oh. It initially started because there was interest from the business community. We had picked it up several years ago, but it was deferred, uh, a different policy by council. Um, we had a lot of internal discussions with council, the commission and staff over the last several years. Um, we have completed our final draft at this point. It has not changed at all since our interim draft because we have not yet seen. Any mobile food trucks um, actually start business up in the downtown. It has not changed at all since our interim draft because we have not yet seen any mobile food trucks actually start business up in the downtown. But we do have them issued. So there are two active permits. They're just not implemented. But I believe that the case is based on our conversation is that we had a lot of roadwork last summer and when Wendell Duval Road had some impacts. I just think that they weren't willing yet to put it out there. But I think we'll start to see this spring and summer and see if the policies are working. So again, it really is just a redo for a third time and kind of how planning policy works if you adopt the interim ordinance. And then you go through and create that permanent. Again, the current one will expire this year in two thousand twenty four, so we have a point to get to hearing about the policy as an ordinance. We've done obviously minor language change, eliminating the sunset clause because the sunset was in there. For anybody that we issued a permit for, once it expired, it was no longer any good. Does government operation of mobile food units, commonly referred to as food trucks within the city. And if we remember, this policy is not applicable to our special events. So this is a standalone policy. So we are set for public hearing and final action. Planning commission will post the first hearing at their next meeting, then you also will have one either at the next meeting or the one when you pass on me. And so we touched this a couple of times. We think it'll be a pretty easy policy to get through. And then hopefully we'll actually get to implement more food trucks coming through. There are quite a few areas. If you remember when we given past presentations, we had a map that showed all the areas in place that food trucks. So we are excited. They add a lot to the community. So we'll get some more. Again, here you can see the map that we used from the original policy. So there's plenty of places. Eventually, you know, we might be able to maybe want to put some off. I should say, cut the road in some of our new, we have the nature of the road as well and I might comment. The mobile food units. So we always look at planning policy through a lens of our growth management map. And so we've already gone through public comments. We've gone through sixty day commerce review. We issued a super threshold of termination. So now you can see we're, you know, definitely at the end, end of that. We have shared originally the policy with both the Rotary and the Denver back last year before we implemented it for the first time. And they didn't, they didn't have any questions or comments, which I think it was good because they can be compatible even when you have, you know, brick and mortar. Are there any questions before we start the hearing process?
Councilmember Schaefer?
So we are looking at the final action before the April expiration of the permit.
That's correct.
Okay, fine, fine. Very good.
Councilmember Navlin?
And we have another process that applies to special events related to food trucks. I'm just curious how that works.
So yes, therefore, for special events, they just check the box that they're going to have food trucks. And then we get a site plan, we review and it's part of that. You know, we didn't want them to have to get a special event permit and a local food truck.
Is there a couple that clear to people who are applying for special events about what they need to provide? And that they don't need to follow this policy?
I would, I, you know, I don't know the answer to that question, so I don't want to answer it off the cuff. We are actually going to be updating our special event permit process. So right now I think you have to throw a site plan and it's a checkbox. And so I don't know what communication there is that you don't have to meet line with the other.
Absolutely, Ms. Schaefer.
We are on the new website design, launching a page just about special events and how to go through that permitting process. And we have had issues recently on folks trying to get special events permits that weren't really city issues, but fire approval. So one of the things that was revealed through some of the recent things that we've seen is it would be helpful for the city to have a page that said, here's what the city needs from you, here's what the fire district needs from you. Sometimes those are not the same and the city can help facilitate dialogue with the fire district, but we can't override what the fire district wants. So we are going to launch a new page that helps people work through.
Other questions?
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, I did have a question. It just popped into my mind. Which policy would apply if someone wanted to bring in a food truck, maybe Saturdays to the ballpark? And just, you know, our concession stand can't really do anything, but it's not really a special event.
It would fall under this particular policy.
Even though it's not really permanently citing, it'd just be like a recurring.
Because even on our, this new policy, the interim one, you can't leave your food truck there overnight. And so it actually would fit really perfectly when we're looking at the map. We're like, hey, you know, as we start to grow, you know, we'll definitely see them in parks and even maybe up in some of the zoning districts adjacent to our parks as well.
Okay. I didn't see like Big Rock Ballpark as a possible location. So does that mean that Big Park, Big Rock Ballpark, you couldn't have a food truck come on Saturdays, let's say?
I will, I'll confirm that, but I believe it's allowed in the majority of our parks based on the size of the park. So I'll check and make sure that it's in.
Okay. Other questions? I don't see anyone else. Thank you for presenting. I'm glad we have, because I know we haven't really used it, used it yet. But it's good to have it before, you know, the demand really increases. So it's nice to have it going. Thank you. So next up, we have our, we have two proclamations tonight. One is Black History Month and the other is National Donor Day. Clark, would you like to read those?
Yes, thank you. Proclamation, whereas the rich tapestry of our nation's history is woven through the dialogue and value of the region. This is the original property, every background. And whereas Black History Month provides a special opportunity for all Americans to reflect on the significant role that African Americans have played in shaping our country. And whereas throughout our, throughout history, African Americans have made enduring and remarkable contributions to the fields of science, literature, art, politics, sports, and every facet of American society. And whereas the struggles triumphs of cultural heritage, cultural heritage of African Americans deserve to be celebrated and acknowledged by all. And whereas fostering understanding, appreciation, and unity among all citizens is vital to creating a more, a more just and harmonious society. Now therefore, I am the mayor of the city of Duval and hereby declare the month of February as Black History Month. I call upon all residents of Duval to recognize and celebrate African Americans' achievements, resilience and rich culture, cultural heritage, and honor the individuals who have played pivotal roles in shaping our image. Second proclamation, whereas the act of organ and tissue donation represents the epitome of selflessness, compassion, generosity, and whereas National Donor Day serves as a poignant reminder of the life-changing impact that organ and tissue donations can have on individuals and their families. And whereas countless lives have been saved and improved with a noble and altruistic act of donation. And whereas the need for organ and tissue donor remains critical with thousands of individuals awaiting life-saving transplants. And whereas raising awareness about the importance of organ and tissue donation can inspire more people to become donors and make a positive difference in the lives of those in need. Now, now therefore, I am the mayor of the city of Duval, who hereby proclaim February fourteenth, two thousand twenty four, as the last National Donor Day. I encourage all citizens to consider the gift of life through organ and tissue donation. And I commend the individuals and organizations dedicated to promoting awareness and facilitating the donation process.
Thank you. Next up, we have comments from the audience. During this designated public commentary period, individuals are allotted three minutes speaking duration while representatives of organizations may address for up to five minutes. And before presenting, kindly disclose your full name and residential affiliation with the city. It is also strongly advised to submit verbal comments, written form, to expedite correspondence. And Clark, do we have anyone signed up to speak tonight? Or I could just call and ask. I'll wait to you. Two people? Thank you. I'd like to. Okay, thanks. So first we have Val Hammer. You can approach the podium up here and you'll have your. Oh, you wrote, no. Oh, got it. I'm sorry. I didn't see the nose. You sent me that. Oh, yeah, I know. Well, okay, since I see nose on both people signed in, is anyone on the phone to see? All right. All good. All right. So and then since we are not doing online comments anymore, then that would be it. Okay. All right. So next up, we have our consent agenda. Does anyone want to make a motion?
The move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes. The mayor is on AWC business tonight, but she did not hear to give her report. We covered all of the city administrator's report, but we were a little short on time. So just to quick open up if there were other questions that we didn't get to. I think, I think we were good. Okay. Are there any individual council reports? I'll quickly give mine. So myself, Councilmember Cusell and Councilmember Supple, we're the three of us went to the training session on Saturday. And it was really great. And it's kind of a funny thing because, I mean, that is a lot of fun, actually. I mean, normally trainings are, you know, you're struggling a bit, but it was really engaging and really fun. And I think like we talked during the pal, you know, we're trying to move backward, utilizing our procedures, our rules, Robert's rules and all those things. So it might be a little clumsy at first as we get rolling, but we're all here to support each other and work through it. And then the other thing I would say, and our city administrator brought this up during her report as well. The doodle poll I put out to find dates that worked for our retreat, there weren't quite enough people on any of the dates to really make it worthwhile, probably. So what we were thinking was usually we have that second set aside for a count. And most people already have that on their calendar. We don't have anything super pressing to put on the March as a March ball. Cow. So we could use that time that most of us already have on our calendars to do whatever we can for a retreat if that works. Does everyone, anyone know for sure they'd be gone or that wouldn't work? I had already let Councilmember Isaacson know and I spoke to him earlier. So I thought maybe he'll find you the hard comment here. March twelfth, I believe. It's the second Tuesday of March. We could, I mean, we could start earlier if you wanted to, or we could just start at the five thirty, see what we can get done. If you're open to starting at four or five, I mean, we could try to do that, but I'm fine sticking with five thirty. I know some of us have, you know, work and things like that. Those things like that would maybe work for you. You as well?
Yes.
Yeah, you're good. Thumbs up from Councilmember Navlin. Does it look? Probably because I prefer all to hit out. Oh. Well, oh man. Okay. Well, hopefully you can maybe sneak away for a few hours. Okay. So it seems like that would probably be their best shot to at least get going on that. I think one of the things, you know, we had talked about were some trainings for sure, though maybe to prioritize talking about budget priorities. Since that is coming up soon, it may be good to have that discussion. But I'd also like to talk, you know, a little bit about like that one rule of the one question for speaking, like, is that too hard to enforce? Does that get a little hazy? Do we want to look at a time limit instead, you know? So like maybe a super quick look at our procedures and maybe we could have our attorney help us through some things too, if that's wanted. So just throwing out a few ideas. You don't have to have answers right now, but I just wanted to put that out there. So I didn't see any other individual council reports and I don't think we have any committee or ad hoc reports. However, we are going to need to convene our human services grant subcommittee soon. Correct me if I'm wrongly putting you on the spot, but I think Councilmember Cusell and Councilmember Supple had mentioned, right? You had said you'd be interested in, you've served on it before. Yes, and you, you're new, so you haven't. You know, there have been years where we've done two council members. There have been years we've done three. I have served on it probably almost every year since we started doing it. I'd be happy to sit on it if that helps for just the two of you want to do it as well. Is it, do we have a staff? Are you the staff member that would be working on that committee or would it be Sherry as well?
It'd be very similar to the economic development grants that I would, with staff help, put together the packets. But I'm in assist with walking through the roof brick and issuing the grants. So a combination approach, but yes, I can help set the meetings and facilitate the meeting.
Okay. So to all council members, I guess, I think we could probably just head nod if you're good with those council members serving on that committee this year. Yeah, okay. And then, like I said, my offer to help if wanted, if not, I think two is fine as well. So I, you know, we'll just see, maybe we'll see.
Last year we voted it in. So it was nice to have a lot of numbers.
And okay, yeah, well. All right. So that is all on that. So we'll move on to our existing business. First item is Agenda Bill twenty four dash post seven, Report on Government Facilities Assessment. And this is with Director Lenishewski and Laura Strennel.
Evening councils, back business. See my desk, it works. I'll have a couple of brief introductory statements and then I'll flip to the slide show. I'll do a screen here. I have one screen right now. Worth is here. He was quite critical and all the work that went into this on the staff side. So I'm here with questions and she'll be here. But again, facilities assessment itself and supporting documents are provided. We're happy to have this come to a conclusion. Just a brief modifications were made through the document, including headings, summary and initial programming after the meeting we had in late point three. Subconsultant informations and evaluations were not unedited. We had updated populated tables for consistence. These are the documents that once we can edit, no massive one. Project costs were left unedited in section B. Some of the options considered are the clean level and our, our rainfall trended, not the project. The appendices then include the bulk of the work that went into all of the documentation and the report itself, some of the meeting notes, some of the meeting presentations. So try to, you know, the beauty of electronic documentation and you can make it fairly robust and then I said additional license. But that's it and I will get. So the government facilities assessment, a quick summary, overall findings for major building and then our next. So summary, we do deem the project complete. It's all wrapped up. Their executive summary, after you do the finalized consultant, provided table and the project list. The buildings and facilities will share a public file. This might not intend to take overly a long amount of time. So the bottom line and the overall findings, existing facilities do not meet longer needs of the city. All facilities are in poor condition by operational standards, excluding the police department and the new permit center remodel, which were conducted in and amongst the process of its government. The recommendations, general strive to consolidate staff and building, prioritize after the industry, prioritize the public work management, relocation, design and construction, creating and acting funding policy for capital facility projects. Prioritize the public works management, relocation, design and construction, creating and acting funding policy for capital facility projects. Addition to the real refund, for example, municipal financial plan would be a great guide and offer recommendations for funding policy. So City Hall in three, I've read that City Hall is on Main Street. Good news, it has great street presence and access for the community. Bad news is maintenance efforts continue to increase instead of black out to parking and specific rebuilding. Uh, last area for expanding within the existing structure and also active support. Not a common space, not a program space, no currently any conference room. So that's where we're at today. Uh, police station. Again, it is in decent shape. It does, is usable and poses no immediate life safety issues. Recent addition of dual locker rooms, new surfaces throughout, repainting inside and out near roof, new kitchen. Quite a lot of effort this last year, which is great. And it does look great down there for me, so. Bad news, maintenance efforts will continue to increase. It is a modular structure, which is considered, you know, margin temporary, permanently permitted, but temporary modular building. It does lack area for expansion and credit. Public Works Maintenance Yard is unsuitable for off state and not code compliant. So it is recommended to be a high priority. New location, guide to space and then begin designing the new facility. So it does lack area for expansion growth within the existing structure and footprint. Out of building under a pointed up style structure that is not code compliant. Limits operational capabilities, lacks proper programming state. My son, uh, parent center, the old public works engineering building is under construction, will be code compliant, meet current operational standard. Uh, will be a good operational facility for many years and validating engineering building planning in 1900 one building. Right, all access, the facility space, conference room and current technology. Now, the only downfall is it is on semi industrial space, industrial site with our current use of ground. So the next steps, consider this assessment complete when there's separate action. We will be using the government facilities assessment to inform the security project list. Very last page of I think 334 is the, is the basis for that next kind of level of work that will come through the comprehensive plan. That big process. We would like to add this and expect to add this as an appendix to the capital facilities plan and comprehensive plan itself. So another piece of this three legged stool, we've looked at everything. Now we're going to see is, you know, the work going out coming this month to de-plant path for split station. So that'll help formalize some of the remaining items that will compile and understanding the city staffing nature today into the future. What we do with all that is always good for information and sharing and discussion, but that's where we're going. Identify deficiencies and then are we missing things that we would be providing or adding up the programming, et cetera. Kind of a workflow for work. Um, the third leg of the three legged stool need for part of this facilities assessment is the overall municipal financial plan. So that will be advertised in market. That's somewhere I can connect with capacity and hopefully provide opportunities in the city for capital programming, operations, maintenance, funding, capacity and often. Uh, this is long term funding as well, or that is all hopeful to be put together prior to the budget season. So the C I P and the capital improvement plan will be the next phase of this. So we begin to plan and design capital projects and maintain and then they work, you've got the facility. And those projects bring from improvements on sites, exterior, interior and all of them. Building replacements and standard operating and maintenance programming. Do that. We did have, we had received some questions. We did provide responses today. The document is again, is, is good. We can make it under the circumstances that we're in. So there's a little bit of inconsistency in places, uh, part of the nation on some land, you know, certainly can be had. I think that's in a good spot.
Yeah, that's got a lot of questions. Council member Chief.
Uh, first of all, thank you, Steve. Congratulations. I hope it's been a long, you know, long road for you and staff. To, to come to this point. One, one of my concerns, however, is land ads. Now we have, I think, a very good idea of what our needs are as far as the building space or parking space, all of that. And it seems to me, land acquisition ought to be one of our top priorities. To, you know, to, so we can actually have a place to put these new, new facilities. Where does that, where does that fall on your plan and where does it fall on your list of priorities?
As far as this to explain, thank you for, for commenting. Again, Laura said, but. Overhead deep inside the spreadsheets in trying to coordinate all of the inconsistencies brought to document and making it available as we have useful products. Certainly a lot of work, I don't know. But all of them follow us. Your question, I think. I think understanding through the work analysis, you know, who we are, what we are, what we're going to be, whatever we decide to be, what we hear. And that report should be part taken into consideration before we do anything, as well as the plan. Those are all, you know, we, we have some ideas. You can always, you know, borrow, wait. Look for grants that'll all be part of that process, but I think that's just something that I plan on helping identify. And then, you know, it, it does take time. I don't think anybody's surprised past, you know, the outcomes specifically to the dollar. We do have a sigh of relief with the remodel of the facility and putting a permit center together that'll last us for a while. You know, in that capacity, great space, great space for employee meetings, for development activities. But we're still missing on this part of it. Other things to consider. But yeah, that's, I think, we have to wait. Till budget season, the intent of those three documents now can be used for the budget season to develop a preliminary plan, run that forward.
Did you want to reiterate?
Yes, uh, here's Grandal, so the engineer. So there is a part of the capital facilities element and the capital facilities plan that has working the teams for land acquisition team in the city. So that's something that's coming. It's, um, it's a really big document that's really not very big. It just compiled all of our long. This government selling now that we just did. So that's coming. You'll, you'll see that. And there's a part of R T W under the G M A planning that has a place for land acquisition to live in.
Right, right, thank you.
Council member Mercer.
I don't have this in the question for, for Kalina Tefsky or for you. But I think one of the, the chances that I think was alluded to this document has evolved and there are probably been challenges. I know one of the things, you know, when in some of the initial presentations, there was a programming element. There was, in addition to just the facility assessment, and I think they're kind of go hand in hand as it meets the needs of, of the city. I am curious sort of this next phase that, that you alluded to, Steve, in terms of the, the, the programming element. Does that leverage what was already done and what does gap analysis? Wanted a little more clarity on sort of next steps in terms of what we've already funded in terms of what we expected to receive versus this next phase. And, and if that net new work, if that leverages some of this work where there were gaps. To try to get a little clarity in terms of the next step.
So I think I can answer that. As part of the finding and finding and budget process, there were three additional projects that kind of. All together speak to this central question of what to do with the buildings. So this was one part of it. The workload analysis was put in the budget. That was budgeted for an R P. The R P was issued on the first. So that project is a piece. There was also budgeted $50,000 for municipal financial number R P. That we thought we were going to put out March first. I think we might push it up and release that R P various months instead. So we can get all of this work done in time for the next budget cycle. And then as a reminder to council, which we can't really do until we have these good pieces in place. We have our funding for a city hall site design. That's not to say building a city hall, but it's $150,000. It's marked for site design and replanning for a city hall. So all of that work is supposed to be done in this way. I don't know. I don't know if they exactly answered your question. But in all of these disjointed pieces need to be done to tell the whole story. And then layer over the call plan that's also happening. It talks about land acquisition and what to do with capital facilities. So it's a big year of puzzle pieces.
Yeah, and that helped. I think it was kind of where one stopped and started because it wasn't clear the scope of this initial document in terms of. And I know there were some things we didn't get, so I appreciate that, the clarity, but it sounds like they're, they're coming together.
Council member Napland?
Yeah, one thing I saw some notes in here that kind of just reminded me that when we do a workload analysis. The workload doesn't necessarily scale according to population. It could vary depending on are we in a building boom? We're a huge building boom. The workload is extraordinary. We're building facilities part. We have a lot of projects going on. If we go into a phase where we level off on some of those things or even go back to a lower baseline. How will that affect our staffing? And so, and planning what facilities we need. If we're not in a big building boom. It might be different. It might look different. So I guess what I'm wondering is when we're doing a workload analysis and we're looking at this. You know, our next step of what our capacity is, are we taking that into consideration or are we just looking at what do we need today? And how might that scale? Based on just a general population growth and if it scales according to that. So I don't know if that's the approach I would take.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, so the draft or, or not the draft, the R P is in the packet. That was really something very first. And one of the things that we included in our is to look at current needs. We have recommendations for operational efficiencies based on permits. But it also goes to have future staffing and not based solely on population growth. So on programming needs and bring here in place of other operational efficiencies that can be had on current workload. That would then inform what the future means. It could be, and I don't want to anticipate any of the outcomes, the one, you know, the why you hire people. It could be that the workload analysis says staffing is fine, it's fine for now and it's fine for future needs. We don't know what it is. But it does, R P does. I anticipate the way we get some of them.
Any question? Um, I'll go one second. Um, I, yeah, I thank you for getting it to the point it is. I know that. You know, if you just look at the history of this agenda bill, you know, it kind of goes back a bit, right? And then not forget, I was just in October, we had our subcommittee met and worked through this and we appreciate all the time you all put into that. And I'm glad to get to this point now. I, I really appreciate all the hard work. Council member Napland?
Yeah, I also want to say thank you for answering my question. I had been wondering what the capacity was of our remodel buildings and, you know, the shifting of staff. How much capacity we're using up or have remaining? So I don't know who the answer was, but thank you, whoever it was. And then my, my other question really quick is on that $150,000 grant or I don't know if we can direct appropriation or grant. For city hall, is there any opportunity to say, hey, we did our analysis and it might be a higher priority as a public works yard? Like, we have to get that potentially done first. And maybe it would open up a spot that we could do our city hall. Do you know what I mean? Like, uh, it, you know, kind of tricky about what you have to do first potentially in that flexibility.
Um, we'll have to go back and look at the notes from the budget hearings that we had. A year and change ago, so October through December of '22. Because when you look at the budget book, the whole thing of stories, there is a section under the list with. A good amount of specificity, what those public funds were going to be used for. And city hall site design is one of them. Now, uh, finance director McMenon and I are in process right now of looking at all of those public funds to make sure that we have appropriated every nickel and dime of them. Because we have to appropriate all of the money by the end of 2024. Doesn't have to be spent, it has to be appropriated. So we want to make sure that if we underspent some things that we're bringing that to council and, and using all of the resources that were provided to us. Might be an opportunity at that point as we grew up to say, is this still the list that we want to cover? And we can probably bring that into council with many of the others though. And because I anticipate at least one of the projects, I think we lingered a bit on. But I think when we overspent a little bit, we need to true that out. Um, and then come to council if we have any nipples left to see what you want us to move on. So it might be that opportunity to see if the list is still what you want. But again, we do have to appropriate, but.
Uh, council member Chief.
Uh, so you're by no uncertain for it again, that holds the, indeed the budget that we, the council, uh, agreed upon. But at the same time, as long as, and correct me if I, if I misstate something, but as long as it still be Harper compliant. I believe the council could change it.
Yes.
Yeah.
You would need to do two things. You would have to do budget amendment so that we could trump the change. Because again, duly voted budget that was appropriated for specific uses, then it, it doesn't. You'd have to do a budget amendment and then you would have to do an appropriation under our budget use the money differently so that we could adopt them.
Good in time.
I don't see any, go ahead.
Really a statement. So that would be, you know, it's good for us, the council, keep in mind that we could reappropriate that, that money and use it. So we relocate the public works yard or, and or land acquisition that we thought it was more, more urgent. And maybe, so I think that was a very good point.
Other questions? Oh, sorry, go ahead, hold on.
I don't think ARPA will allow us for land acquisition.
Oh, oh, okay.
Um, we'll have to double check, but I think, I don't know that land acquisition in and of itself would meet the ARPA funding mechanism, but.
Okay.
But I'm.
Other questions?
What I want to know.
Go ahead.
I'm going to approve Agenda Bill 2407. The adopting of the government facilities assessment report as presented and provided as a pimix to the comprehensive plan update process currently underway.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I'm going to reread it because that's what we just learned in our training on Saturday. Um, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Bill 24-7, the adoption of the government facility assessment report as presented and provided as an appendix. The comprehensive plan update process currently underway. All those in favor, please, oh, sorry, is there any more discussion? Yeah, I'm still learning. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we'll move to our next item, Agenda Bill 24-10, 2024 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket with Director Thomas.
Good evening, council members, governor's committee. Uh, this is an item that we pretty much do every year, but this one is just a little bit different because it's for our 2024. And so this process starts in September of last year with an application to document. That then ends at end of year. And once it ends, we batch it for planning commission review and council review, planning commission review docket. And made a recommendation, it's last week, it was on 1/24. Council turn to adopt the Agenda Bill, which would allow us to continue moving forward with all of our docket. Item with a 2020 periodic update. And we did provide a recommended motion and Trump will choose the things before the meeting.
Council, council member Mercer.
Oh, I got it up there. I'd like to make a direction. I would recommend as a city council, the application CPA 24-001 be included on the final 2024 docket for further consideration.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to recommend the city council application CPA 24-001 be included. double oh one being included on the final twenty twenty-four docket for further consideration. Although, any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Uh, aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much. And our last item on our agenda tonight is agenda bill twenty-four dash oh one, public records request policy with our clerk, John Vitera.
I'm putting it in everyone, I'm a private city clerk, um.
Do you like?
I will, and I'm going to come sit up there, so I will just, uh, put it down on this slide. I do not have my glasses on, I realize the light is really difficult to see. Um, so we just wanted to provide a, two slides to tell you what is in the packet. So, uh, the original draft of the public records of policy went through a fairly substantial edit, though the content largely remains the same except for there were a lot of additions, um, to make it a really whole robust policy. So, um, on this first slide, just, uh, yeah, thank you. Um, so the new draft incorporates city, city council questions. Um, the full answer is emailed to council on Thursday, February first. Um, but this new draft red line that you have in the packet, uh, includes the answer to that question on, um, custom service charges, so you'll see that changed. Um, this went through a full attorney review for completeness and readability, because some things you see are just moved, a section from one part of the policy to another, so it flows a little better. Um, it does authorize the online portal for electronic records request, which was impetus for bringing this to council in the first place is that we're launching, well, and that our old public records policy was, um, somewhat old, but we are launching a portal for, uh, electronic records requests, so this surprises us to be able to do that. Um, our attorney provided greater clarity on what is a record. Um, so there's a definition that follows R C W on what an identifiable record is for the purposes of public records requests. And, um, they also provided clarity that, uh, to identify the difference between asking for a record and asking for confirmation under the R C W, those are not the same thing. So there is additional clarity around that for the public to understand the difference. Um, it adds that non-city devices, meaning everyone's personal cell phones, and, uh, former accounts from former employees are certifiable and identifies a process for how the city would go about asking a former employee to look through their devices. Um, there's additional detail on reductions and the requirements for exemption law that have been included. Next slide. Um, so it also clarifies public inspection of records and copying and scanning costs when the public comes into city hall. Um, so there are times where the public can come in and inspect records at city hall. However, there isn't room in city hall to do that very well and efficiently, and so inviting staff in, or inviting the public into staff work areas um, often is not possible, so the policy clarifies that. It also clarifies with copying and scanning cost art, if a member of the public comes in and wants to inspect documents, um, authorize the city to charge copying costs if they're there wanting print or scan, march documents. Um, it clarifies when the city may request, um, oh wait, when we may deny a request, and how we communicate, um, those denials. Uh, better defines abandoned or withdrawn requests, which we've had a couple of issues with this year on folks that made records requests but were difficult to get a hold of when we get satisfied with request and when we would consider that that may withdrawn. Uh, inserted language regarding requiring deposits for bid, um, records requests. Uh, we obviously wouldn't request a deposit for something that's been processed two dollars, but I might with different, it's a substantial records request. And then there's a new section for closing up. So these are just like a few things that you're seeing. I wanted to provide, um, just a snapshot of a couple of these items to offer context to the red line, not asking for decision tonight because it is a substantial revision. So this is just an opportunity for, um, you all to look at it again. Ask any questions, we'll take those questions. We've got Andrew, um, from Ogden Murphy online with us. He was the one that went through and did the attorney review. Um, so if you have questions tonight, you can ask Andrew, but you can also send them to me. We can do another round of revisions with, um, the goal of bringing it back to council on the twentieth.
Council, what questions do you have? Council member Nappland?
I have one. I need to look at it a little more. I might have a couple little things, but, um, I'll do that. Is there a deadline for when we would need to submit any comments or revisions?
Um, so the goal that we have is to bring it back on the twentieth because we need to have a policy in place so we can launch the electronic records portal, because it has to be improvised and documented. Um, so if we bring it back on the twentieth, let me just pull up my calendar, um. Oh, the latest would be the twelve in order to turn around comments with the attorney and get it back in the packet by the fifteenth.
Okay, thank you. So my one comment that I, um, and actually, if we have the attorney here, it's, it's in a couple places, I think on page four, one B, and then maybe page, page three, one B, and then page four, I have a C that sort of talks about revising and amendment of this policy. It, it seems to be that, um, it is going to be that it can be administratively revised and after revision, um, council will just be notified. And I'm, I'm curious first how common that would be, that a public record, record policy or public record policy would not require council review before modifications are made? And then, um, yeah, I mean, maybe I'll just ask that question first, because I have my own opinion on that. So I'm curious how common it is. Oops, we can't hear you.
Oh, there's, there's, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, apparently there is a mute button on my microphone. Well, uh, sorry. Good evening, Council Andrew Stoming for the City Attorney's Office. So, so excellent question, Councilor Nappland. Uh, I've seen it done, um, either way, I've seen some P R A policies that specifically delegate that power to administration to um, revise a P R A policy. Oftentimes, this is kind of done mostly because if there's a change in the law, there's, uh, that desire to have, uh, staff to be able to quickly pivot and make those changes. Uh, but, uh, of course, if we want to remove that and require the P R A policy to be taken back to council for proposed revisions, we can certainly do that as well. So, uh, it's really kind of choose your adventure at this point.
Council member Supple?
Yeah, I, um, found this document kind of difficult to read with all the movement of segments from one section to another. Um, so is possibly if a PDF version with the revisions included, so I can kind of look at the ones that's marked up, first with the one, the final document that's been proposed?
Yes, we can send a clean PDF, or a clean, so I can create a document in Word that accepts all revisions, takes out the comments, and you can see it in its clean form.
Okay.
Yep, I can send that out tomorrow.
Other questions? Not seeing any other questions? Last call. All right, um, well, thank you for that. And so just to remind you what was just discussed too, that the deadline for comments on this would be the twelve. Um, and that you'll send out a, a clean version if people want to just look at it without the
Revisions as well? I know, sometimes it's nice to have hope though, right? But yeah.
Well, and in this case, I think it was important that council saw that, um, that there were revisions. There is a lot of movement of stuff, um, which makes it hard to read. But more importantly, keeping the red lines, you can see the new things that were added by the um, but yeah, certainly by tomorrow you'll have a clean work version that you can all hear.
All right, council member, sir?
And I guess I have one question. We, and I appreciate the work that went into this. A lot of it is around process in terms of how we handle it. Some is actually around uh, respecting the legal requirements for documents. So there's a, and, and this council member now in comments, I think there's, you know, I separate those into two buckets, sort of, an exposure on the city for not meeting statutory requirements. And then another in terms of stat, how stat processes to request, which is more of an administrative capacity piece. Um, we can obviously provide feedback, which just has to go through another review. My, my question was more around our internal process. If we have asked for denials that aren't in here, if there is conflicting information, which was asked, are you planning to do a similar process to what we've done with past documentation review where we'll walk through the comments one by one? So with that said, you know, make an effort to get the comments in, but we'll have a final opportunity to, to sort of walk through that pre-final final version, I guess.
Yes, so you same process. So collecting comments, in this case, collecting comments, having it go through legal review, which is what we did with the public art policy as well. Collecting comments after the first touch, having it go through council, having it come back. Council has now told you what has to be in it. So now I'll collect comments again from you all, you know, this is one of those touchy things where there are some things that you may not like, but we cannot take down. But there might be provisions that are nuances that you can request, that we can have, um, reviewed, added, amended. I'll bring it back. When it gets to a place where you can all vote it, we'll do the same thing. Um, go through each comment, is this a comment that you want to support, you voted by, you know, non-incident vote? We'll go on to the next one until we have a final document that can be fully loaded, and we'll just run through those iterations as often as council needs to. Um, I just offer that, um, you know, hopefully it will be a somewhat efficient process because we do have
Council member Nappland?
Yeah, so that just reminds me, so the, the question I brought up and the changes kind of that I requested, are you saying that those are identifiable and we're going to vote and pull now or? I'm wondering. No, I don't believe that.
No, yeah, no, I was, I was
Not the thing that that's what you were saying, but all of a sudden I thought, I, I don't
And apologies, I've been sort of out of order a little bit here, but it was really, we provide feedback and then sometimes you do worse. So it's kind of a few phases where it, it, it's meets the the feedback from council, what it changes, and I think that's fully acceptable to get the final document in shape. I think I was just asking if we provide additional feedback, if there will be another opportunity to review, because you did specify some time through the deadlines around the system going on, I just wanted to make sure we had sufficient time to collect the feedback, incorporate the feedback, and provide feedback on incorporated changes before we sort of stand to, you know, we're apt to vote that final time.
Oh, yeah, this can go through as many iterations as council needs to get to a document that you all are comfortable finally moving. I mean, I think the public art policy went through four iterations before it was in place for you all were feeling what you could we can use.
Other questions? Okay, well, that was the last item on our agenda, so if there are no objections, we'll adjourn at eight.